Pledge of Allegiance Dr. Day.
Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Dr. Day. Item C1 is approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion?
I have a motion to amend the agenda.
Go ahead, Mr. Tross.
I'd like to amend the agenda to discuss in addition to the ECS policy manual with respect to honor roles and graduation honors.
Have you shared that with the clerk?
I sent, yes, I sent her a copy of the policy.
Board members have it.
All the board members, as well as Dr. Edwards, Dr. Wodoka, and Ms. Pierce.
Second. Second. Do I need to vote? Do you have an amendment too?
Yeah, I think there's a couple other amendments. I don't know if you want to do them one at a time or do them all at once.
Do it all together.
All right, give me a second here.
So he can go along with the crowd.
I'm still trying to catch up after the last meeting. Give me a second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call on his amendment?
Okay.
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and I would like to move that we just take item, I want to move item K1, which was the recognition of this year's high school representatives, and move it up in it to following their presentations rather than so deep into the agenda.
So their presentation will be?
Which is after E6.
Okay.
So I'd like to move K1 to immediately after E6.
I'm looking at that, Mr. Tross.
Yes, sir.
Why? That's number one? Do you have another one?
And another one is, we wanted to put on the agenda business, a budget discussion.
And that would be the item?
That would be all business that should occur between K and L.
K and L. So all item discussion of 24, 25 operating budget. Do you have any more amendments?
No, I, that's enough.
That's enough. Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Motion.
You moved it, right?
I moved it, yes.
Second. Mr. DePaul, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, there's amended agenda for approval. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion.
Mr. Andrews, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D1 is chair comment, and I'll yield my time today first to Delegate Walker, and then to Ms. Finney. Delegate Walker?
This device, you leave it sitting right here? Oh, no, that's fine. It just happens to be a larger piece. But we'll find a way to get it set here. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come before the City of Lynchburg School Board tonight. It's quite an honor. And before I present this resolution regarding one of our area schools, it is also an honor as your representative in the General Assembly, as well as Senator Mark Peake, to recognize the achievement that has taken place here in all of our schools across the city of Lynchburg. I know that Dr. Edwards and I are oftentimes in some of these schools making presentations, whether it's bicycles for achievement in various quarters. And then, we also have another honor as elected officials in the General Assembly, and this is one that I enjoy the most, and that is actually doing honor roll certificates to each school that provides us with the list, and thankfully, we have 100% participation here in the city, of students that are achievers. And this is a certificate on behalf of your legislator, and we send that to all the students that receive those honors from the various schools. And I oftentimes have people on the street that'll stop me and say, "Mr. Walker, you don't know how happy my son or my daughter was when they received that certificate, that honor roll certificate from you and from others in the General Assembly." So I like to brag on the city of Lynchburg that we are a city of smart, educated, well-informed people with bright futures, and that's all because of the results of leadership here and the hard work of the teachers and principals and everybody. So without getting into a long speech tonight, let me just share with you something that we did this past year on behalf of the General Assembly and the House of Delegates. While Senator Mark Peake is not here, I'm sure that he will concur with us. But this is a resolution, Resolution Number 226, and this is commending Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation. And before I get started, how many folks have attended Dunbar that are here in this room? Okay. So this was agreed owned by the House of Delegates March 4th, 2024, whereas Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School of Innovation, an esteemed institution of the Lynchburg City Public Schools, celebrated its 100th anniversary in 2023. Whereas, after the Black community in Lynchburg petitioned the Lynchburg City School Board for a Black school, high school, Dunbar High School opened its doors to students in 1923. Of 90% of the graduates of the 1920s went on to higher education. Whereas, throughout the 1930s, Dunbar High School was increasingly operated under the leadership and authority of the Black administrators of the school, including Clarence Williams C., who would serve as the school's principal from 1938 to 1968, guiding the school to academic excellence in the spirit of the segregationist barriers in the place at that time. And whereas, as the faculty of Dunbar High School grew larger and more diverse, the school's curriculum evolved beyond the classic program to include a more general and vocational-oriented courses, encouraging a greater number of students to achieve at the school. Whereas Dunbar High School would continue to grow in the post-war period as new buildings were constructed, the state champions were won there, the school's graduates attended the nation's most prestigious schools, and went on to become leaders across various distinguished professions at the local, state, and national level. And whereas, the desegregation of Lynchburg City Schools through the 1960s would ultimately result in the closure of Dunbar High School in 1970, and as students began attending the other school, which most people know as EC Glass. And whereas, in 1994, the school reopened as Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation, an innovative that was started by a magnet school continuing, under a continuation of a grant that has since been administered by the Lynchburg City Schools with support from the Lynchburg City School Board. And whereas, for 30 years, Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation was fostered by intellectual, social, emotional well-being of his students and nurtured in the achievements of his faculty, staff, helping to make Lynchburg a wonderful place to live, work, and to raise a family. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates, that Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation hereby commend on this occasion of its 100th anniversary, and be it resolved further, that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School for Innovation as an expression of the House of Delegates admiration for the school's history, its contributions to the city and to Commonwealth of Virginia, patent by Delegate Wendell Walker. And at this time, I would like to ask the principal and the assistant principal of Dunbar Middle School, if they know that they're here, okay. If y'all want to join on either side here, because I'm sure you guys want to get a photo here. But for the principal, we just want to show you how much we appreciate, not only Dunbar Middle School, but all the schools here in the city. You had a rich history, and that history has had an impact here in our city. And we just want you to know, on behalf of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the House of Delegates, how much we appreciate Dunbar, as well as the other schools. And so congratulations. Thank you all very much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the school board.
Thank you, Delegate Walker. We know we have a friend in Richmond with the name Wendell Walker. Thank you. Ms. Finney, you're the second one. I'm yielding my time.
Thank you, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Day, members of the school board. I'm Alicia Finney from Down the Road, Clerk of Council for City Council, and I'm here to talk today about the 2024 school board appointment process. I do have some slides. If we can throw those up, Austin? Thank you. Council had the opportunity to weigh in on this a few weeks ago, and I thank you all for allowing me the time to come up here and talk to you about it. Next slide, please. Every year, council considers appointments in each district. This year, the incumbents are, in District 1, Mr. Randy Tross, in District 3, Dr. Atul Gupta, and in District 2, forever the dedicated and committed public servant, Dr. Sharon Carter, first appointed in 2015. You'll be closing out your third and final term this June. Thank you for your service. Next slide, please. Next Tuesday, council will hold its first public hearing. This is a time for candidates to speak on their qualifications, and a time for parents to state their support or opposition of the candidates. I will post these in our public the week prior, so you'll see a list of names, and as applications come in, I will be updating that accordingly. Historically, council has elected to hold open their public hearing to allow candidates more time to apply. So we've scheduled that for on May 28th. I'm sorry, this is not, can you go back one slide? Yes, thank you. Last year, at the end of the second public hearing, council began choosing candidates they'd like to interview. So we're holding space this year at the end of the May 28th meeting for council to do so again this year. However, council will still have two weeks to finalize their selection when they're scheduled to conclude this part of the process on June 11th during our general business. We'll hold some time in the two weeks that follow to conduct those interviews with appointments being made during general business at the June 25th meeting contingent upon successful background checks. Next slide. What can you expect if you are an interested candidate? Well, we are currently accepting applications and will continue doing so through the second public hearing. State code does dictate that if your name isn't said into the record during our public hearing, then you cannot be considered for appointment. Interviews will be held in an open meeting. This will be open to the public and livestreamed. Council deliberations and appointments will also be held in an open meeting, and state and national criminal background checks will be conducted for those selected. Next slide. So what kind of information do we collect on our school board application? Well, we collect the basic contact information, such as your phone number, your email address, your physical address, your ward and district, and occupation. We also ask two questions. What experience do you offer as a candidate for the Lynchburg School Board, and what do you feel you would contribute to the Lynchburg School Board and to the community if appointed? There's an option to upload a resume, although that's highly encouraged, and these information is not made public, citing personnel information under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. So that's it for me, and I thank you all for letting me go over this process briefly with you all. If you have any questions or any points about the process?
You said you would notify us. Will that be an email to us, or is it on the website?
It's on our website and posted, yeah, on our council board docs, and it's just, it's made for the public.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Finney. Any questions? Thank you. You are one of the unsung heroes of City of Lynchburg. Thank you for everything you do.
And I do have to say really quickly, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our teachers. They should be appreciated herein.
All members got that email. We are doing meals for teachers as part of this appreciation week, so as your schedule allows, hopefully people can join that. Now we move on to item E, student representative, Dr. Edwards.
Sure. And this being the last meeting for students, because the next one, they are not in school. We have a packed house of students who want to share wonderful things with us. And I always love the presentations and the creativity. So I am going to kick it off by starting with my Bedford Hills Elementary School, bringing in Principal Sherry Steele.
Good evening. My name is Lorelei. I am a fifth grader at Bedford Hills Elementary. As you can see, our principal, Ms. Steele, is our biggest supporter for innovation and enrichment. She goes above and beyond to keep us excited and motivated to learn. I'm here to tell you about Lego League, an exciting after-school enrichment opportunity we had this year. Our school librarian, Ms. Arp, saw how much we loved building solutions to problems with Legos during her library classes, and believed we could achieve so much more if we had the opportunity. She worked hard to find funding and community support. Thanks to an impact grant from the Education Foundation and additional support from Extended Learning Coordinates, Ms. Witt, we were able to create eight devise teams, a total of 48 students, along with 10 parents, staff, community, volunteer mentors. Each team worked tirelessly after school with their adult mentor to, as a guide, twice eight weeks, for six weeks, to come up with an authentic and innovation way to build a stage and platform that would best represent an interest or hobby. Learning about the technology behind a stage show, we added mechanics, light, and sound using a coding software. We tested, we tested it, shared it, reflected on our journey, and presented the entire process and modeled the judges, to judges at Randolph College, where we received glowing reviews and awards for things like enthusiastic presenters, and in our team's case, marvelous motion. With the help of our amazing mentors, Ms. Rebecca Kilby, our fifth grade team worked together to make the model that you see in front of you. First, we had to explore the possibilities and learn. We had to learn to cooperate in order to make a successful team and Lego project. We had to learn to divide up the tasks and areas, and more importantly, make compromise. Some people would build structures and some would modify them. Then we had to design, brainstorm and design. We all liked the idea of a fun event, so we came up with a beach party. We incorporated all of our interests, music, gaming, skateboarding, food, and animals. We let each small group work on their main interest.
Hi, I'm Oliver. Next, we had to create and test our model. The team worked together to divide up into four main sections, and then each group decided on what effects, lights, light, sound, and motion would work for each place. Lorelei wanted to make, wanted sound effects, lights, and music for the musicians. Sean and I decided to do a concession stand and use sound effects. Aiden wanted gaming and skateboarding with lights and sound. Finally, Miles and Lorelei wanted a petting zoo with frog finale with a sound in, with sound in motion. Then we shared our progress with other teams. We looked at other projects and how they worked. Sean decided to expand the concessions with bigger size and more details. Miles added more animals to the petting zoo and made the frog table more sturdy so it would support the motion. We want to share this with the community because we think we worked really hard on it, and we want to show what we, what we did as a team.
Hi, I'm Miles, and this is the final model description. It is a beach party with a live band, a video game area, skate zone, and petting zoo with a frog table finale. We started with the announcement, introducing the stage and live band. Next is the video game area where you can play Mario Kart and other games, as well as skateboard. Finally, we end up with the petting zoo and frog finale. During the whole party, there's a concession stand with food and merchandise to shop for. The stage is motorized to draw attention to the musicians. Lights were used on the stage with each team member's last name initial to make it more personal. Lights and sound were also used in the video game and skating area to make it exciting and explain the rules. The finale uses motion and sound effects to entertain the crowd. Sound effects and music are used in every area to make it more fun and appealing.
Thank you for letting us share this amazing experience with you tonight. Go Huskies!
Thank you.
That is cool.
Thank you.
Look at that.
Okay. Well, that was certainly impressive, and I just love Miles, because moving up there all excited about the work. He had me excited up here, too. So congratulations to our little Lego team there. So congratulations to our little Lego team there. Start young, and then who knows what they'll be building by the time. They are my age, so, so proud of them to share. And the fact that they incorporated the arts and music and everybody's interests just showcased once again what we do when we cooperate as a team, we can get everybody's needs met. So, thank you Bedford Hills. All right, next up, my little learners with their principal, Jason Jambreon, back there from Darrington Elementary School.
I know Desi's not shy.
That's right. So we are still waiting for one of our Dolphins who's our speaker, but, so we're gonna flip it a little bit. We have a video we're gonna show you last. We're gonna do the video first. So if the video's ready, we're gonna show the video that everybody put together.
Mr. G, I have a request for you. When you're done, could you please, what you have a slogan every morning, or every kid in your school does? Would you be able to share that with the community and the board?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, boys and girls. I am.
Smart!
I am.
Important!
I am.
Respectful!
I am.
Hardworking!
I am.
Good-looking!
I am.
Best part of the future!
I am smart. I know that I'm smart because my teachers have high expectations for me. In class, we work together to learn each day. Sometimes we learn as a whole group in class, but other times we work with small groups and partners. When students need extra help, they got, they get one-on-one time with teachers. We learn a lot in a lot of different ways, with our eyes, with our ears, by reading, by writing, and through experiences. Our school is special because of the programs like STEM, Spanish, book clubs, after-school tutoring, and enrichments. At the end of each quarter, we celebrate with awards and, and award ceremony. It feels good to recognize for academic achievement and attendance through our G store. We earn G dollars from Principal Jambreon. We are able to learn, to earn, save, and spend our G dollars every quarter at the G store.
I am important. It matters that I come to school each day. When I walk in the door, I'm always greeted with a smile. If I miss a day, Ms. Wayne Wright asks if everything is okay. All of the grownups who work at Desi know my name. At school, every student can receive a backpack, breakfast, lunch, snacks, and a library bag. We have community guests who come to read to us, garden with us, teach us how to build rockets, and even celebrate us with bike assemblies. We've seen two operas by Opera of the James. We've had a dance presentation, a visit from Miss America, and we even starred in our own Black History Month musical written for us by Dr. Johnson and produced for us, for us by Ms. Porter. Every week, we learn an important fact about Black history. The PTO raised enough money so that each of us could choose a book at the book fair for free. Mark Spain from the news came and read to us. The Desi community works together every day to let me know that I am important.
I am respectful. I am proud to walk the halls at Desi. I have learned how I can show respect to others through my words, my actions, and my choices. During morning meetings, we talk about showing respect for each other, and we practice skills to help us get along. If we have trouble getting along, we can always go to our teachers, Mr. G, our custodians, Ms. J, or any adult in the building. Ms. J takes time to work with students who are going through situations or who need help working out problems. The Boys Mentoring Program is all about brotherhood, strength, and character, and learning to model strong role models who volunteer to spend time with us. Girls are empowered through Confidence Club volunteer, I mean, meetings with Dr. Johnson, Miss Terry's Dollhouse Club for Girls, and Fifth Grade Girls Lunch Club with Dr. Johnson. Spending time, learning, and creating together builds confidence. At Desi, we show respect to each other, to our school, and to the community around us.
I am hardworking. Hard work takes time and effort. At Desi, I know faster doesn't always mean better. Our teachers want us to strive for excellence by completing challenging tasks. To do this, we have to work at something little by little, day after day, until we meet a goal. Desi fifth graders spent months working on their science fair and History Day projects. In art, music, and violin, students spent weeks creating works of art and learning new songs. Second and third graders created habitat projects. Week by week, we continue to learn to speak Spanish. In the fall, we transformed our library into the Desi Book Cafe. We had two reading challenges to track and increase our time spent reading. As a school, we read over fifty-four thousand minutes this spring, achieving our goal. When we work hard at Desi, we were recognized. Mr. G gives shout-outs on the announcements. Teachers display our projects and assignments. Dr. Johnson gives the Science Sparkle Award. At the end of each quarter, students receive bug awards, which means bringing up grades.
I am good-looking. At Desi, we celebrate spirit days where we show our fun pride through our clothes, hairstyle, and swagger. I know I look good when I take care of myself. The Virginia Co-op teachers teach us about nutritional and how to prepare healthy foods. Ms. Austin teaches us fun movement games that keep us in shape. Students are from EC Glass visited Desi to show students how to take care of their teeth. Community businesses owners visit us to talk about fresh-cut skincare and style. When I know I look good, I feel good.
I am the best part of the future. Mr. G tells us that we can have big dreams. We can achieve great things. When community business leaders visited us on Career Day, we got to learn all about different types of jobs. I have hope for the environment. In fourth grade, I learned how to take care of the earth by planting a garden and composting. Going on field trips also helps us build our dreams because we see what's happening in the world. Second grade went to the Danville Science Center. Kindergarten has been to the Layman Farm, the fire station. Danville Science Center and they partnered with third grade for a STEM challenge at Day at Funk Quest. Fourth grade learned about planting gardening at Randolph College and Lynchburg Rose. Kindergarten first grade and second grade are going to Mill Mountain Zoo next week. Best of all, as fifth graders, we got to go to Washington DC to the National Museum of African-American History and Culture. We traveled to our nation's capital and saw the accomplishments of so many generations of people. We are going to the Lynchburg Public Library this month to get our tour. Learn about summer reading and give library cards. Our parents and grandparents show their hope in us by planning special events and activities throughout the school year as part of the PTO.
I am smart, important, respectful, hardworking, and good-looking. I have a bright future ahead of me. Desi has taught me that I am the.
Best part of the future!
Hello, my name is Rachel. I am a third grade student at Desi. I love Desi because people are sweet, because they help us learn by making us feel safe and loved. People are also fun. Mr. Levin, he gives us rewards when we behave, such as candy, toys, and magic dolls. Ms. Batista is so nice because she's always trying to help us learn by explaining it in an easy way. Every, every teacher, custodian, and student is very nice. They are all willing to help out, such as Mr. Naja. She is smart, kind, and loving. The people also encourage me nonstop and challenge me to go further. God loves Desi, and so do I.
Unfortunately, the hour other Desi Dolphin is about one minute away or two minutes away. He did not get to make it, but we're gonna give him a special shout-out on our morning announcements tomorrow, so he'll get to say his speech tomorrow in our announcements. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm, I'm okay if, to wait if you are, I mean.
If he's on his way, we.
We, we're gonna wait. You're that young.
We will make time for the Desi, Desi Dolphin.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to recognize the silent supporter of Desi, Dr. Coleman. He told me he's here, supporting Desi.
So while we, while we wait for our little Dolphin, thank you, Desi, for that amazing presentation. And in there, so much literacy and reading and fun. And Ms. Pugh and I were at that fifth grade science fair challenge.
Science fair!
Yes, yes. We, we were certainly impressed with, with your students. And even at your violin concert, all the things that you do are just absolutely wonderful. So thank you for sharing that with us and inspiring us with all of that Desi love there. It does make the board meeting just feel good.
Yeah.
Having you here. While we wait for the, our Desi Dolphin, we're gonna transition to our next group of student speakers. And this would be with Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Wells from our historic and awarded Dunbar Middle School of Innovation.
Thank you, guys, for having us here. We're very excited. We have two gentlemen here representing our school, Taylor Jump and Tristan Rule. Taylor is an eighth grader and Tristan is a sixth grader. We've had multiple students from different grades talk about our experiences from field trips to innovations to athletics, and they're gonna talk about it now. And I'm gonna give the floor to Taylor first, and, yep, we'll go from there.
Hello, my name's Taylor, and I will be filling in for a couple of students that couldn't make it today. Starting with innovations, for Mr. Johnson's innovation class, they created podcasts that they got to publish on Dunbar Spotify page, DMS Innovations Podcast. Mr. Johnson's, Mr. Johnson also opened up internship opportunities within ours, within the school where eighth grade students can intern in sixth grade classes. In Ms. Harris' pottery cla- poetry class, they entered a poet, they entered a poetry contest to win money earlier this semester and had several poems published this year as well. For elective and clubs, clubs, math counts, mathletes have been work, have been hard at work this year. Every Friday since September, they have gathered to prepare for the regional competition. Our team competed in February and, in, and all district competition. The team came in fourth place with the most improved team award, electives. And Mr. Johnson's career in investigation, in, blah. In Mr. Johnson's career investigations class, he had guest speakers come in and talk about, and talk to us about different careers, fields, as well as improving my typing skills. Recently, in art class, I've been learning how to create 3D art. Mr. Moore's class recently launched rockets as part of an experiment. And Mr. Jo- and Mrs. Johnson's class, teen living, Ms. Sider has come in as a guest for six weeks and taught us many teen cooking lessons on nutrient, on nutrition, and the importance of a well-balanced diet and lifestyle. Ms. Sider and Mrs. Johnson both have taught to the students the importance of fruits and vegetables to their daily meal options. Field trips. As a student of Dunbar, I've had a great experience going on field trips. There have been a variety of field trips this year, like the recent trip to Music Department Competition in Hershey, Pennsylvania. The school did a, the school did great winning the following awards. Show choir, compromise of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, won first place. Seventh and eighth grade orchestra won first place, and seventh and eighth grade band won first place. Theater traveled down to Junior Theater Festival in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, theater, the school received an Excellence in Dance Awards, and the following students were recognized. Two students named All-Star, Cassian Lee and Cameron Spencer. Two students made callbacks for the Cheregraphy. How do you pronounce this? Choregra- choreograph. Choreography video audition. Quentin Tom, Quentin Toms and Lily Yarbrof. My personal experience on a field trip this semester is when I went on for, went on one for my herpetology class. We collectively visit the Pedlar River and the surrounding area. The trip was amazing, and it taught us a lot about the river itself going along with other things, like how the water is tested and what fly fishing is. We even learned how trout lived in the rivers, like the, the one we visit and release trout that Mr. Tucker hatched and raised in his classroom. I've had a great time, and I'm sure my peers felt the same way. This is by a girl named Abby. Hello, my name is Abby. I am a sixth grade student at Dunbar Middle School. At, at Dunbar, my teachers have been helping me prepare for the SOL. They have printed out SOL reviews and made sure we have had notes to study off it. We needed help. Earlier this year, we had a history project called History Day where we picked someone or something that was a turning point in history. This was set up like a science fair. Fair. And the winners were Asher Ford Foster, Junior Group Exhibit District, Amir Davis, Junior Group Exhibit District. Brent, I might pronounce, I'm pronouncing this wrong.
Brennan Porter.
Brennan Porter, Junior Group District. Brinson Key, Junior Group District. Hannah. I ain't got this. I'm bad at this.
You're fine, buddy. Yeah, I think it's Progstein.
Pro- Hannah Progstein, Junior Group Democracy District. Luciana Poller, Junior Group Democracy District. Luciana and Hannah are now competing in states now after plat- after placing segment and regionals and democracy section. This marks the second year in a row that Dunbar has qualified for state competition. In English, students worked on their poetry skills, and students for each grade level were able to accomplish great things. Students are also created online poetry books using a program called Book Creator. To top off our year, one of our very own sixth graders placed first in the 2023-2024 Piedmont Young Writers Contest. Seventh grade students produce multiple project-based learning products in the forms of creative, creative writing essays, inherited na- narratives, and presentation. Dunbar has multiple winners in the local Beatburg Poetry Contest, as well as taking first and second place in the perceived young writers' poetry contest. The eighth grade English team and their students worked very diligently to meet and exceed expectations this school year. Students read over 1,000 books for the 20-book challenge and even published their own books of poetry through Ms. Harris' class.
Hello, my name is Tristan, and I'll be, and I'll be talking about Dunbar Sports. Dunbar Sports this year has been great. From winning city championships, having good sportsmanship, Dunbar Middle School ha- is a top sp- sports middle school. We have also won two city championships this year, and we're going for another one today in track. Here are some of the records recently broken in track. Most notably for the girls' team, A- Ayana Mosley broke the school record for shot put, 36 feet, 6 inches. El-
Eliana.
Eliana Bradner broke school record for 100-meter hurdles, 16.11, and triple jump. 33, n- nine and one-fourth. Sydney Foster broke two records, 400 meters, 61.46, and 800 meter, 2, 2 minutes, 25 seconds, 69. For the boys' team, Tr- Tramique Hudson broke shot put record, 47 feet, 7 inches. Aiden Campbell broke the 100-meter record, 11, 11.33, and 200 meter, 23.70. The boys' fours, four times, four times 100-meter relay record, 46.63. A.J. McCoy, Aiden Cow- Campbell, Gregory Abbott, Tramique Hudson. Our sports team has been great and will continue to be great for many years to come. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. I just wanna give both these gentlemen a big round of applause for doing, coming out and talking about our school. We're excited to be here for over 100 years and hopefully 100 more.
There you go.
Thank you poets for sharing all of that with us and all of your accomplishments, which is why on, uh, May 21st, we will be celebrating our students. The school board will be honoring all the accomplishments of our students, and we can't do it in the boardroom. We just have so much and so many, um, that will be at EC Glass, and I'm sure we'll see a lot of these students at that award ceremony. Okay, moving on to our next, uh, group of students, uh, with Principal Dr. Dills, uh, from, uh, Linkhorn Middle School. Let us welcome our Jaguars.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Katie Grading. I'm the band director at Linkhorn Middle School. In front of you, I have four of my eighth grade band students, and we're just gonna play two short excerpts for you, um, some things we've been working on. The first is a Bach Corral, um, a four-part Bach Cor- Bach Corral. And the second one is just a short excerpt from one of our spring concert pieces called Dragon Slayer. So two very different pieces for you this, this evening. Thank you.
Not right now. Not right now.
Okay. So one of the fun parts about this is I never know what the students are gonna do. So it is so great to have them just celebrate us, um, with music, and, uh, that brought back memories. I used to play clarinet and trumpet when I was in high school. That's no easy feat. But you all know what the research says about students who study music, right? They do better on standardized tests. So, kudos. We always gonna have a music program here, um, in Lynchburg City School. So thank you Jaguars. Okay. Um, we, is, am I Desi? Okay, we are gonna take a pause and shift back to my one little Desi Dolphin who was not here, but we will wait for you, cuz you are important as we learn.
Hel- hello, everybody. My name is Tyrell Cobbs. Thank you for all you guys from coming. The first thing I like about Doc, De- Desi is I love the staff, um, because they are very helpful. I love the library because they are the, it makes my reading better and it helps me think better. I love, I love the lunch cuz it's very yummy. I love the prizes we win in our class cuz we try our best. I love the people who helped me in my SOLs test. Mr. Finn, Ms. Lewis, Mr. Barbara, Ms. Ms. Shenaja, thank you all for helping me. Thank you for listening.
That was definitely worth the wait, and I know our school nutrition director, Mrs. Morris, is probably so excited to hear that lunch is yummy. So thank you, um, for sharing that with us as well. Okay, we are gonna transition to our high school student reps. Um, always a joy when, uh, they share with us the happenings at EC Glass and Heritage High School. So I think we are starting with Lucy.
All right. Well, this is the last meeting for the students for this year, but I'm happy to announce that I've been re-selected for next year. So seeing as the school year is coming to a close, I wanna, um, really kind of go in and highlight our spring sports who have been doing really well. Uh, softball is four and eight, and I wanna give a shout out to a senior who's on the team, Abigail Jones. And she's committed to be a pitcher at Virginia Wesleyan University. She's been doing an amazing job. Uh, next, of course, is baseball, who has a record of 14 and 2, which is very impressive. And they actually have a really big game in a couple of hours tonight versus Jefferson Forest. Um, it's, a lot of people are gonna be attending cuz it's two really strong teams, so that's gonna be very exciting. Um, JV baseball is two, seven, and one. Boys tennis is also playing tonight with a match, uh, at home against Jefferson Forest. Uh, they start a little bit earlier than baseball. They started around six. And girls tennis is away at Jefferson Forest. Um, and the number one seat, who's a freshman, Tovia Crothers, has been doing really well this year. So congratulations to her for being number one as a freshman. And then, let's see, boys soccer is also having an amazing season, 11 and 2. Um, and JV boys are 10 and 2 and 1, which is really impressive, winning records. And I believe having a strong team bond is super important to a successful sports season. Uh, and the varsity goalie, Charlie Hagman, says that they're a very close team, and it really helps to have a feeling, a, a, a good feeling of camaraderie and responsibility for one another. Uh, they have, they have a lot of belief in themselves this year, which I think you can tell, and it makes a big difference when it comes to having a winning season. Um, and then girls soccer is also having an impressive year with a record of six, three, and one. JV girls are a record of five, three, and one. And then, uh, both boys and girls varsity lacrosse have recently celebrated their senior nights, where they recognize the seniors who have helped contribute to those wonderful winning seasons as well. And then outdoor track and field has also had a great season with their next meet being on the 10th. In addition to the athletics happening at Glass, this year's recipients of the Hilltopper Alumni Football Scholarship were congratulations by, were congratulated by their teams, families, um, the LCS staff and the Beacon of Hope, Hope staff, um, at EC Glass. Nicholas Watson plans to, um, attend Christopher Newport, Christopher Newport University next fall, um, but leaves behind an amazing legacy. He was named All Seminal District and Class 40 All Region during his career at Glass. And then the other recipient, uh, Michael Thomas, will be attending Emory and Henry Colleges, or Emory and Henry College, sorry. And he was also named All Seminal District and Class 4D All Region. And he, Mike Thomas actually had over 1,000 tackles during his time with the Hilltoppers. So congratulations, and we can't wait to see what they do next. Um, and then a little bit in the arts, I just wanted to congratulate and recognize the students who went to Richmond, um, from April 18th to the 20th to audition to become all-state musicians. And, uh, we had a few that walked away with that honor, including Isaac Harding, Morgan, Morgan Cook, Trenton Walker, and Alton Quinn. And, uh, they went in, went in and auditioned, uh, for their respective instruments or choir, in Morgan's case. So great job, and keep up the good work. Um, more in the arts, last night, EC Glass held a talent show for their stu- students, um, which the participants auditioned a few weeks back. And, um, EC Glass has a lot of talent, but most specifically the winner of our talent show, uh, J.J. Kersey, who sang a lovely rendition of Something in the Orange by Zach Bryan. And J.J. is actually, um, a blind student at EC Glass, but he has not let that or anyone stop him from being just incredibly talented. So we're very proud of him. Um, on the weekend of April 20th, a group of career and technical education students got to attend the Virginia Skills USA State Leadership Conference in Virginia Beach. They competed in a variety of contests such as architectural drafting, uh, crime scene investigation, criminal justice, job interview, and technical drafting. All the students did a really great job, uh, representing Glass, and a special shout out to, uh, two of our winners, JP Mansur for bringing home first place in technical drafting, and Anna Boyers, who got first place for job interview. So congratulations. And as we all know, AP exams have started, and our students, uh, regularly scheduled exams are coming the week of the 21st. And faculty and staff have done an amazing job of keeping students morale up, um, during just these times of a lot of cramming and a lot of review. Uh, and just last week, during our lunch periods on Friday, Dr. Rule was allowing students to write encouraging messages on strips of duct tape and letting us pretty much tape them to the wall. He was a very good sport about that, so thank you. We all had a really good time, so I know I enjoyed it. And then graduation. Graduation is coming up, and I wanted to just kind of walk y'all through what the schedule is going to look like for the seniors. So first is the senior baccalaureate, uh, for Glass, which is gonna be held at the University of Lynchburg Chapel on May 29th, or on May 19th at 2:00 PM. And then our mandatory graduation rehearsal, uh, is in the EC Glass Auditorium on the 30th at 11:30. And last but certainly not least, graduation is going to be at City Stadium at 8:00 AM, so we can properly honor and congratulate all of our seniors. And that's all I've got for you, but thank you so much, and happy Teacher Appreciation Week.
And now from Heritage.
I apologize in advance for not having a presentation. I just found out yesterday that I was gonna be here, so uh, we had our senior night moved for girls soccer, and I'm so glad I was able to be here for the last one. Um, I will not be coming back next year cuz I'm graduating, but I believe Matt Garland, who I know personally will, and I'm very excited for that. He will do amazing. Um, so to start on a little bit of a community engagement, at the beginning of the month over spring break, um, our Pioneer Theater hosted a kids camp, and at the end of the kids camp, they perfor- performed honk, uh, junior version. And also engaged in kids camps, our girls soccer team held a youth camp, and that was a big success. Uh, we had students from within LCS and Campbell County, and that was wonderful. Uh, we also had, uh, our National Honor Society, our football players and our cheerleaders led by wonderful Coach Bradley. Um, they attended and volunteered at Laurel Regional School Prom, um, and that had a sports theme. So seeing the pictures for that, I got to go last year, wasn't that able to go this year, but that was so fun for them. I loved hearing the stories. Um, we have had some financial donations from J Crew, um, in organization with AdoptaClassroom.org. Um, so in the fall, that was for our arts programs, and we've had one this spring, which is for beautifications of our grounds. So we're very excited for that. Um, in athletics, we have had some senior nights. Track and field had theirs a few weeks ago, um, although there were several state qualifiers, so their season is far from over. Um, girls soccer, baseball, and girls tennis will be this upcoming Tuesday. Uh, boys soccer, boys tennis will be on Friday. And for images from those, look out for Renee Shelton. And we actually have a boys soccer alum, Jawed Sherzad, who's been picturing, um, soccer, girls and boys soccer, and then JV and some of our middle schools. So check him out on Instagram. He's doing really good there. Um, on to some events in our student life, we did have our prom this past weekend. So if you wanna see some pictures from that, go to Heritage High School on Facebook. Those are some really good pictures. Um, we have Decision Day coming up May 17th, and that'll be hosted in cooperation with Beacon of Hope, so we're very excited about that. Um, graduation will be shortly after that on the second, and they just announced our speakers, so we're excited to hear from Ronald Black as our introduction speaker. Um, Akira Mallett, who is a wonderful track athlete. She will be our main speaker, and then our valedictorian, Macajah Mason, who we saw in here last month. So that's it that I have for you guys this month. I apologize for no pictures, but.
Sala, where are you going?
Um, I'm going to be enlisting in the Air National Guard, and I'll work as a cyber warfare operator for a year before going into the Air Force Academy, where I will get my bachelor's in astronomical engineering, and then my master's in computer science.
And like you say, Sala is one of our, Sala's one of our students that goes to the CVCC dual enrollment program.
Yes, love the early college program. Such a community there.
If I may add, I enjoy, you can convey my kudos to your baseball and softball teams. I enjoy from my window watching the game every evening nowadays. They're both playing together. They can synchronize, so one is playing, the other is off. That's beautiful.
Fun.
Fun, yes. Should we do the, uh, declaration first?
This one?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Well, uh, we are so glad that we were able to have you two join us, um, this school year. Uh, you certainly have brought a refreshing perspective and have covered so much information, um, about your schools to keep us informed, and never mind just being good role models, wonderful sports, and just, uh, joining us for convocation and doing all the things. Um, got to see at National Honor Society, see that business skill of yours, organizing all of that. Uh, it has been a pleasure to work with both of you, and I'm so glad Lucy's coming back next year. That, that is wonderful. You can help mentor the new, um, new, uh, heritage rep here. We do have a special guest, a guest gift for you and a resolution, which I am going to read, make sure I'm reading.
You're reading the one, and then he.
Well, it's on two pages, and I, she's only.
Well, it's on two pages, and she's only got one page.
Okay. All right, you want me to read both of these?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just checking, making sure I can do this. All right, so this is a resolution of commendation and appreciation to Sela Erkskin and Lucy White, presented by the Lynchburg City School Board. Sela and Lucy were selected by their peers to represent EC Glass and Heritage High School on the Lynchburg City School Board during the 23, 2023-24 school year. The Lynchburg City School Board views this desire to serve in the public life as the worthiest of ambitions. With this resolution, the Lynchburg City School Board seeks to pay tribute to Sela and Lucy, students who have conscientiously worked to keep their student bodies' viewpoint before the Lynchburg City School Board. In doing so, they have fulfilled their responsibility and made valuable contribution to public education in this community. Whereas Sela and Lucy served the Lynchburg City School Board as Heritage High School and EC Glass High School student reps to the Lynchburg City School Board from November 2023 until today, May 2024, whereas both Sela and Lucy served as role models for their peers, excelling as leaders and voices for their schools by participating in important school board discussions that directly affect their peers. Whereas Sela and Lucy's attendance at Lynchburg City School Board meetings demonstrated their commitment to their role as champions for the best possible educational experience for all students. Now, and therefore be it resolved, that the Lynchburg City School Board of Lynchburg, Virginia commends Sela and Lucy for many valuable contributions in providing the school board with yet another viewpoint for their consideration and guidance. Furthermore, the school board of the city of Lynchburg takes pride in these superior individuals who so early in their lives have already begun to make their marks by taking such an active part in the public life in Lynchburg, Virginia. Lynchburg City School Board.
And school administration.
And school, yeah. And I certainly echo those words, and on behalf of my team, and of course, school board clerk, who gets to work with you all. We are so proud of you, and we are excited to see your next journey. Do not forget us, come back and definitely tell us all the good things and to continue learning from you and watch you grow and develop in your senior year next year. Good things are to come for both of you. So we have a couple of...
Let's, Dr. Edwards will hand out...
Certificates and special gifts. We have a special certificate for you, and just wanted to say congratulations. And thank you so much. Gifts for you, thank you so much. Yes, yes.
Thank you for all you have done all year round.
Thank you.
Dr. Edwards, we have AP presentations.
Oh, we do, that's right. We're still on Student Common, this is great today. Okay, we have one more student presentation, and it is one of our students, Lily Hall, EC Glass senior, did an AP capstone research on something that is very near and dear to our heart, teacher retention. And she did work with our chief human resources officer, who is very excited to support her work. But we would like to present her short video. And then, our, two of our teachers, Mr. Reed and Mr. Matthews, are here on behalf of Lily and to share her work with us as well. So, Mr. Hall, come on.
Good evening, Board. I'm going to apologize first of all. Ms. Hall was not able to make it tonight. She's on the EC Glass tennis team, and they had a match that was called, and it's, this match is also a breast cancer awareness one, and so she felt like it was really important to be there. So I am definitely here to talk about this. My partner, Mr. Matthews, was also going to be here. He could also not make it, so you get me tonight. Before you watch Lily's video, I want to give you a little bit of background about what AP capstone is, why we have it, what it does for our students, because my bet is you have no idea. In 2016, EC Glass became a pilot school for the new AP capstone program. This is a two-part class that Glass offers here in Lynchburg City Schools. The first part is available to sophomores and juniors at EC Glass. It's called AP Seminar. And it begins by teaching the basic research skills that you and I want our students to have, namely that research is not asking serious question. It involves actually finding credible sources, checking the validity of those sources, and then synthesizing them into something important. AP Seminar is a unique AP class because the student's AP score is not derived from one test. You know, one of the things I think you and I both know is that the era of one test, one score, one day really is in the past. And the College Board understands that. So the AP score that kids get in AP Seminar is actually the result of them writing multiple research papers and uploading those to the College Board. And more important, giving digitally recorded presentations the way that some of us did our senior year of college or maybe in our master's degree programs, where we had to defend our research. Our high school kids are doing that. And that's the first class. The second class, which is what you're about to see a little bit of here, is literally called AP Research. And here's what it means. Kids with the help of their mentor, and this year, Mr. Matthews was the AP Research teacher, I was the AP Seminar teacher, with the help of their mentor, they identify a research niche that they are interested in, something that has not necessarily been done, something, you know, we call it a gap in the research. They spend an entire year combing through sources and conducting original research. This culminates in a 5,000-word paper that they have to upload for their score and a 20-minute digital presentation, complete with a panel of experts who then ask them questions about their research. It is exactly as intense as you think that it is. Here's why I'm here tonight. Lily Hall, one of our amazing seniors, wanted to research teacher retention in central Virginia, specifically as it equates to Lynchburg City Schools. This is a fortuitous kind of evening because you guys are about to look at a personnel report later. And if you've looked at it, you know that what she's about to tell you matters. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and let you see, we've reduced her 20-minute presentation down to about four and a half minutes. She's going to go ahead and present this to you. Mostly, it's the results part of it. And then, we'll come back, and I'll add a little bit more context and take questions.
Hello, my name is Lily Hall, and this is my AP Research presentation for the 2023-2024 school year. I, the title of my presentation is Tenacious Teaching: Discovering the Factors Affecting Teacher Retention. I originally was interested in looking into teacher retention when I found this graph, and it showed the high numbers of resignations throughout the LCS community. And as you can see, EC Glass, my school, has very high retentions over the past 10 years, or great resignations over the past 10 years. So this led me to my research question, what factors influence retention in elementary, middle, and high school teachers in central Virginia schools? How I conducted my research is I created a survey, and I surveyed elementary, middle, and high school teachers in the central Virginia school system. The survey was split into new teachers versus experienced teachers. And I set up a system where teachers were to ask how many years they had been teaching. And if they answered zero to five years, they would be sent to the new teachers portion of the survey. And then, if they answered six to 20-plus years, then they were sent to the experienced portion. And this kind of served as a comparison between new and experienced teachers and how they, how they recognized teacher retention in their own lives and in their own schools. And so, as you can see, the majority of teachers selected 20-plus years of experience or zero to five. I asked teachers what their biggest challenges was so far in their teaching career. The majority of new teachers found that behavioral issues was the biggest problem, at 67.7%. I asked experienced teachers as well, what is the biggest challenge for new teachers? And they agreed that behavioral issues at 89.3% was the biggest problem for new teachers. I then asked teachers how much time they spent dealing with behavioral issues during their day. And on average, they found, the majority of teachers said that they spent 11 to 15 minutes, 11 to 15 minutes addressing behavioral issues. And the second largest portion said that they spent 16-plus minutes addressing behavioral issues. I asked experienced teachers the same question, and they had similar results with 31.3% spending 11 to 15 minutes of class time dealing with behavioral issues. I then asked what improvements could be made to accommodate new teachers. I, I asked this specifically to the experienced teachers who had experience and knew what could be, adjustments could be made to accommodate new teachers. And the majority of the results found that higher salary is the biggest problem for teachers, or that could help encourage new teachers to come in and stay in schools. However, the second highest answer was programs to help prepare new teachers, at 55.4%. This graph I found in my research was a study that was done similar, that was conducted. It was sent to, a survey that was sent to teachers in a high school system. And the survey addresses what ways can we attract new teachers in high need schools? And they found similar results with each choice, the results found that money is the best way to encourage teachers to stay and attract new teachers to stay in the system. So, my future research and implications. The research that I found can help provide insight in the cultural changes around the school, and the many behavioral issues could also be a factor that has also been changed as a result of the cultural changes. And these are, all these are really important factors to study and for future research. And my recommendation is that new research should focus on looking at other ways that can encourage new teachers, like programs and things to help prepare them, other than money, because that's just not a very realistic solution to this problem, as many schools, especially in the LCS community, don't have enough funding to increase salaries. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you, guys, for watching.
So two quick follow-ups there, and then I'm happy to take any questions that you have about either the AP capstone program or about what Lily's work is right there. You saw that her sample size was pretty significant. She had over 100 responses from elementary school teachers, middle school teachers, high school principals, Alt Ed, Virtual Academy, all these kinds of things in terms of a response. And you saw the two highest responses there, of course, was teachers talking about, of course, pay and, and what that means, both in the state of Virginia, as well as sort of nationwide, what we see as teacher pay, but also talking about discipline. And I want to, I want to drill down to one slide that she was talking about there. When she was talking about the minutes that were spent on discipline, one of the pieces of that data that she could not disaggregate was, obviously, a high school teacher spends, in our case, 90 minutes with a class, right? And so, what I might be thinking about in terms of a unit of time might be in 90-minute blocks. How long do I spend in a 90-minute block? Maybe that's 15 minutes dealing with disciplinary-related things. For an elementary school teacher, obviously, now we're talking about a different unit of time, right? Because they have those kids, as I am reminded by my better half, all day. They don't get them just for 90 minutes. And so, I do want to, I want to put like a little asterisk on that particular chart because I think there's a, there's a couple of ways to look at that. Finally, the last thing that I want to say is, you know, as you guys tonight, when you get to that personnel report and you talk about it, you, you know that people are watching, you know that, that your teachers are watching and the community is watching. But the kids know. The kids know. And, and they're, they're, they're literally out there doing their own research. One of the things that a lot of my students have told me is, when they look back, none of their ninth-grade math teachers are still here. None of them. And so, they realize that there are, there are things that we cannot control in our lives. And there are things that you all are presented that you cannot control. But I think some of the data on that chart is something that LCS can control. And if you listen to what Lily is saying, and if you listen to what the kids are saying and to what we're saying, I think you can see that there are some things we can control. So with that, I thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to hang around for a moment if you have any questions.
I would very much like to see her full written report, is that possible?
Sure, I believe that I shared that with the superintendent and a few other folks, so I'm happy to share that with you as well.
So you have, you have it?
I can share it with you.
Okay, thank you, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Just before we close out, all of the student work, just a shout out to all of the students who are here tonight and virtually as well for taking time to share with us. Thank you to the parents. Many of those students are here because their parents were able to get them here so that they can participate. But in the spirit of Teacher/Staff Appreciation Week behind, all, all of the great things that our kids are doing are phenomenal educators who are, you know, in the background, not getting all credit or anything like that, just happy to work with these children. And I hope that we all see, particularly with our younger ones, but not to be missed in our, in our older students, the confidence that they display when they come up to the podium. The camaraderie, I don't know if you noticed, my, my little Desi baby was shadowed by two others. We got you, crew, right? Because that's how they roll. Their feelings of just being supported by their schools is very genuine from, from the students who are here. Good things are happening in our schools, and the good things are happening because we have amazing, great people in our schools. And this Teacher Appreciation Week is just a small reminder. But we have to do more. We really do have to do more to encourage all of us to celebrate the hard work, the dedication that our teachers do every day. Thank you.
I think we moved something up, didn't we?
Yeah, that was the presentation of the awards that we just did. So I think we're, we're okay. Okay, so this is the public comment section. I will read the policy statement here that applies to this. Persons appearing, or persons desiring to address the school board, oops, no, I don't need to read that part. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the board. Please do not clap, boo, or express approval or disapproval of speakers. Speakers should be treated with respect, even if you disagree with their positions. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Voice messages to be played are limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for speakers representing a group. Priority will be given to in-person comments before voicemail messages in the following order. First, students, second, staff, third, parents and guardians, and fourth, community members. Public comments are reserved for the public comment to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. Now, it appears to me that all the individuals who signed up to speak tonight are community members. I don't see any identified as students, staff, or parents. I don't see any identified as students, staff, or parents. If I'm wrong, would...
One voicemail for student, one voicemail from a parent. And not in person.
Okay, there are the voicemails.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have one voicemail and, and, yes, one student voicemail, one parent voicemail, and we will read those at the end. I think we'll have time. Yes, sir? What's your name, sir?
Justin Hensley.
Okay, so you're a parent. All right. So, um, then according to our policy, Mr. Hensley, you go first.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Dr. Justin Hensley. My family and I are residents of District One. Uh, we have three children at Bedford Hills Elementary and one child at Sandusky Middle in the adaptive program. Uh, before I begin, I do wanna say thank you, uh, from me and my family to this board for all the work you put into attempting to make education better for our children here in Lynchburg. Uh, I come tonight to bring a topic that I believe is slipping through the cracks as the board and LCS administration grapple with potential school closures, uh, and budget cuts. There are schools that are still open and operating, and there are items that you need to focus on, other than just what school will be closed and what budget is going to look like for the next fiscal year. My wife and I have two children with individualized education plans, or IEPs. For both of our children, the process to obtain and manage those IEPs has been fraught with misunderstanding, mismanagement, and misalignment within the school system. Fortunately, we only have one child, our middle schooler, um, uh, who is facing the brunt of poor school administration, uh, and who, who, who have no understanding of, of IEPs, individualized health plans, behavioral improvement plans, or how to manage them. In thinking about what is making things better for our elementary school student, after two years of fighting with the IEP process, I've come to the conclusion it comes down to people. At Bedford Hills, we found Kirsty Waller Bradford, who has worked tirelessly with the Bedford Hills team to make our son's school year a success. At Sandusky, however, uh, we found certain administrators whose misunderstanding, mismanagement, and misalignment of the entire adaptive program has been unacceptable and downright deplorable. Across the school system, there seems to be a disparate understanding of how to manage and operate adaptive program classrooms. For our oldest son, who has a rare genetic disorder which almost took his life on day five, and left him with traits of autism, ADHD, and hang, high anxiety, this mismanagement creates scenarios where he is given referrals and suspensions that are designed for the general population, but are being charged to adaptive program students. Essentially, your staff are giving out middle school disciplinary actions to adaptive students who have the mental capacity of a preschooler. I hope you can understand where that just doesn't make sense. Instead of trying to treat our adaptive students like a square peg being shoved into a round hole, why is LCS administration not looking to be more adaptive with these students? I'm sure that my son is the only one who would love to go across the yard to Sandusky Elementary School, to the playground, but when I ask that question to Sandusky Middle Administration, I'm told that, quote, "Outdoor activities can be planned ahead and arranged by classroom teachers," unquote, but that hasn't happened in two years. The LCS motto says every child by name and need to graduation. I can't speak for high school students, but adaptive students in elementary schools and especially Sandusky, that's only something they can dream of. You all might know their names, but you have no idea about their needs. Step up. Reach out to me and ask questions. Engage with my emails that you're copied on, Dr. Gupta. You're looking at making cuts. Save some budget funds by eliminating poor administration at Sandusky. Bring in some folks that know how about adaptive programs and how to make them work for every child by name and need to graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dan Harrison?
Hello, school board members, staff, um, and of course Superintendent Edwards. Thank you as well for all the work that you're doing. I know that you took this on with the feeling and passion to do and make good in our city. I come to, I come to you today as a concerned citizen, parent, and also one of the pastors at Church of the Covenant here in Lynchburg. When I come before you, I, I don't come alone. I stand on the shoulders of my own predecessors, most notably our church's founder, Bev Cosby, who may be completely unknown to most of you. But he understood what it meant to fight religious and racial supremacy in our city. And, uh, Bev found ways of channeling justice-making throughout our city, and those effects are still here today. And, uh, as we look into fighting politicized and xenophobic tendencies that are found throughout our leadership in this city, and it's nothing new. It's been that way for a long, long time, even when Bev started in his civil rights journey in the nineteen fifties here in Lynchburg. But he helped by starting organizations that work tirelessly to try to strip away and dismantle some of those pieces, like Lynchburg Covenant Fellowship, and Interfaith Outreach, and Miriam's House, and many, many others. Now, as a native Oklahoman and a Choctaw citizen, I reached out to our school board, our beloved school board, our leaders, asking, on March sixth of this year, after Nex, that's the, the child's name, Nex, a non-binary student in Oklahoma, had succumbed to their wounds after a fight in a high school bathroom. I reached out, I said, "I am concerned about our LGBTQIA+ students. I feel like this board has done a great disservice to queer and trans students, their parents, and their families in this city." And I think that, for some reason, many of you feel that you have taken some sort of religious high road. And it just angers me, and it concerns me. The only person to respond was Dr. Edwards. Thank you. She gave me the courtesy. And I understand that, that this is not your full-time job. I know that. We all do many things. But you took this job on. And you gotta answer to the hard things, because we, especially as community leaders representing many, many families, come to you, and especially those most vulnerable students. And we're asking you, please, in my letter, I was asking you to please rescind that vote that, that didn't allow the GSA at EC GLASS to, to take the funds from It Gets Better? Because why? They're a queer and trans organization trying to help queer and trans youth? I just couldn't understand it. And then watching one of you mansplain to our superintendent about what the appropriateness of behavior is, I can't take it. I think the racial and misogynistic attitudes that hide behind religious moral things is hypocrisy. We've gotta change. The whole world is looking, I feel, at us. And it's not too late. There's plenty of room to change. And then you're wondering probably, well, he's a liberal preacher, for sure. For sure, he's liberal. He can't be the Jesus, anything like the Jesus that we know. Well, I know that Jesus said, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And I know that what you do to the least of these, you have done unto me. And I know, "Let the person who is without sin cast the first stone." But I feel like you all, except two, very compassionate, intelligent, very smart, professional people on this board, threw those stones at those kids. And we watched it. The country watched it. And I'm sorry if there's been consequences from that that make you uncomfortable. I am, I, I am sorry. I mean, that's terrible. But you have to understand the severity of the feelings of the community. You're ripping us apart, and you don't even know it, because I guess you live in a bubble somewhere. Teachers don't wanna teach here. Administrators don't wanna administrate here. Families are moving. And I ask you to please make this a safe place. Title IX is now, I know several of us are here to address this, because we want you to do the right thing. Civil rights law is no joke. If we begin to go down the slippery slope of making new rules and changing exceptions and things like that, we are not protecting our students. So let us protect our trans and queer students today by doing the right thing and upholding the law. Thank you.
Um, please remember, there's still, there's not to be any clapping. Thank you. That was mentioned.
Next is Vincent Gonzalez.
Hey, can I make something? You're out of order. You, that's your job.
That's yours.
All right.
No disrespect.
No disrespect.
Yeah, so let me just reiterate, please do not clap, boo, or respond in any way to the comments of a speaker. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez.
First, I wanna say that, um, time, I wanna mess it up.
Are you individual or group?
Okay, first, I wanna say that I'm so emotionally drained from coming here this year. This process has really resurfaced memories of my time at LCS that I've spent my adult life trying to forget. When I'm a student, you tell me to think, to use critical thinking skills. But when I'm an adult and think critically, I'm a problem. I wanna say as a member of the Equity Task Force that this year has been very frustrating. This board has communicated to us through its inaction that you do not value our work. I felt that the interaction between the task force and the board last semester was disturbing, to say the least. It's evident that the majority of the board either does not understand or fully intends to enact very real harm on queer and trans youth. I am concerned that this board learned nothing from the national scrutiny that occurred with the It Gets Better Campaign grant and the treatment of queer youth of the EC GLASS GSA. The long-term effects of that fiasco are still being felt by the EC GLASS GSA after so many students were intimidated out of participation. You effectively dismantled a student organization as a school board, and you should truly be ashamed of yourselves. I also wanted to touch on the Yonkin model policies, as it was recently resurfaced by a board member. One of the arguments being made by members of the board is that if LCS does not implement Yonkin's transphobic policies, the district could face possible lawsuit. The reality of the situation is that the state has made no moves to force districts to implement the model policies. But the Virginia Department of Education is currently being sued by two transgender students from York County School Division, as well as a student from Hanover County. The ACLU is providing legal support for both cases and has already reached out to members of the LCS community after the denial of the grant awarded to the EC, EC GLASS GSA. I want to point out that the manufactured outrage that allowing full access to facilities for transgender people will somehow endanger other students or cause an increase in sexual assaults is not only unsupported by evidence, but the majority of the conservative members on school board and city council that support these claims proudly associate themselves with Liberty University, an institution which is currently being forced to pay the Federal Department of Education fourteen million dollars for systematically covering up sexual assaults on campus. More than four hundred cities and twenty-one states have implemented laws to protect queer people from discrimination and allow trans people to use the bathroom that matches with their gender identity. There has been no increase in public safety incidents in restrooms in any of those states. Lastly, the recent amendment to Title IX by the Federal Department of Education passed in April requires schools to allow trans students to use the bathroom that matches with their gender identity. Violating this policy undoubtedly will make this district vulnerable to possible litigation. Thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you. Um, next is Nicole Spendenberg.
I'm speaking on behalf of a group.
Okay.
Hello again. Nicole Spendenberg here, she, they pronouns, representing Queertown Hall, and I'm also a member of your Equity Task Force. April nineteenth, the US DOE released final Title IX regulations that provide vital protections against sex discrimination and advance educational equity and opportunity. These are going to take effect beginning August one. I'll be quoting today from the regulations directly and from lawyers, and I'll tie this to Virginia, to Lynchburg, and to the, um, proposed model policies. Basic takeaways: stay aware of federal law changes, stay in compliance, avoid unnecessary litigation, keep your funding. Yonkin's proposed policies are now out of compliance with another federal law, so I repeat myself in saying do not adopt. You've heard me say so in August in a work session, and you have the documents and slides from that, and I'm giving you more reasons today. According to the Department of Education, the updated regulations serve to empower and support students and families. It clarifies that sex discrimination includes discrimination based on sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation, and gender identity. Sex-based harassment includes harassment on those bases as well. This is from one oh six point ten and one oh six point three one. They prohibit separating or treating any person differently based on sex in a matter that, matter that subjects that person to more than de minimis harm, except in a few limited circumstances such as athletics, which I'll get to in a minute. Any policies and practices that prevent a student from participating in their education program or activity consistent with their gender identity imposes more than de minimis harm on that student, and therefore generally violates Title IX's nondiscrimination mandate. Requiring a student to submit to any invasive medical inquiries or documentation that students experience sex-based harm when they are excluded from sex-separated facilities consistent with their gender identity also qualifies as more than de minimis harm, and therefore is in violation of federal law. And violating the nondiscrimination mandate. The Department of Education told Crisis in the Classroom that compliance with the regulations is a condition of receiving federal funds. Incorrect claims circulating news outlets in the past few weeks say that the regulations rewrite the definition of sex, but as I just said, a quick look at the regulations shows that they expand protections against sex-based discrimination to also include gender identity protection, but it does not overwrite any meanings of sex stereotypes or sex characteristics. Based on the department's review of federal case law, the Department of Education is unaware of any instances in which cisgender students are excluded from facilities inconsistent with their gender identity that have experienced nearly the same harms, or any of the same harms, that transgender students experience. Federal courts have rejected claims that treating students consistent with their gender identity harms cisgender students. The Supreme Court has also rejected the notion that the preferences or discomfort of some can justify any otherwise unconstitutional discrimination against others, for example of a court case, C.C. of Claiborne versus Claiborne. This morning, the Education Secretary Miguel Cardona testified on the agency's priorities and policies to the House of Delegates. When these new Title IX updates were brought up, the House only focused on asking about sports, which is not even a part of this update. Until the standard for criteria for a student's eligibility to participate on sex-separated athletic teams is finalized and issued, the current regulations still apply. From the current fifteen-hundred-page unofficial version of final regulations available to the public, I found that athletics is only mentioned seventy-five times, and only to mention that it is not relevant to these updates. The department reaffirms that a recipient may not invoke Title IX to require restricting speech, expression, or conduct in violation of the First Amendment. Now regarding the model policies, senior transgender rights attorney Wyatt Rola with the ACLU says that these do not follow best practices based on research, and in fact violates the twenty-twenty Virginia Code law. The lawyer has also said that it's a shame that the Department of Education has put school districts between a rock and a hard place, telling you to implement policies that open you up to serious legal trouble. Communities are divided on how schools should treat transgender students. Questions remain about how much power the state has to enforce them. According to the ACLU, you don't have to, because the law does not include an enforcement mechanism currently. You wanna make sure that you're clear what you're doing, and if you implement something that goes against Title IX, that's a liability. Last but not least, as a member of your advisory committee, the Equity Task Force, I'm disappointed that we have not been put on a school board agenda. We want to have a conversation with you about equity concerns and recommendations. We've worked all year dissecting many policies and analyzing equity in this district, and if we can't have a conversation with you about it, then all that work is for nothing. So please, let us talk to you about it at a school board meeting.
Thank you. Next is Joe Meadows.
And hello, I would like to thank the clerk of the board and Dr.
Hello, I would like to thank the clerk of the board and Dr. Edwards for, excuse me, allowing me the chance to speak this evening. My name is Joe, and I have three school-aged children that do not attend Lynchburg City Schools, but I am a Lynchburg resident and taxpayer. I'm here today to speak to you about the updated Title IX rules released by the US Department of Education late last month. I'm here to ask you to reject the call from City Councilman Martin Missions to refuse to comply with the new rules. While I don't expect many of you to agree with the substance of the rule changes, I urge you to avoid any action that will almost certainly cause our already cash-strapped school system more in legal fees defending itself against unnecessary Title IX lawsuits, as well as potentially jeopardizing federal funding. It is also ironic that one of the council members primarily responsible for starving our public schools of funding is also encouraging them to take an action which would waste more money. It's also worth noting that these rules would add protections to students, victims of sexual harassment and assault, contrary to the councilman's claims, and unlike the previous administration's rules, would strip protections from victims and made students less safe. Having watched some of the debates at this school board over the last few months, I feel confident in saying that sadly many, not all of you, but many, make decisions not based on available science, statistics, or other data, but based on your own personal feelings. I don't think any amount of statistics I throw at you will change any minds here, so I'm just going to share this with you. Growing up in the 90s while I was still figuring myself out, being queer just wasn't something you did. I had no support system, no safe place to be myself, or a safe person to ask questions about the feelings I was having. This caused irreparable damage to myself, decades of repression, depression, substance abuse, anger, and pain. For many kids of all backgrounds, school can sometimes be the one safe place they have away from substance abuse, violence, neglect, or neglect that they may be exposed to at home. This is especially true for LGBTQ students. Sometimes school is the one place they feel they can be sa, they can feel safe to be themselves. When you set the tone with your language and decision-making that gay and trans kids aren't welcome, you create a hostile environment for LGBTQ children in our schools. You encourage bullying, and you take away what could literally be a lifeline for these kids, potentially causing catastrophic, decades-long damage to them. The medical science is clear and unanimous. Affirming and supporting our children's identities is life-saving. I urge you, when making decisions that affect LGBTQ kids, that if you can't leave your personal feelings at the door, then you don't belong here. And one last thing, I would like for everyone here to try and imagine for a moment just how much courage it must take for one of your students to come stand here and speak to you, and how cowardly you would have to be to sit there and tell those kids that they are whining and crying. That was truly one of the most despicable displays I've ever seen from someone in government, and you should be ashamed of yourself, Mr. DePaul. And if you have any dignity at all, you should turn in your resignation before you leave today. Thank you for the chance to speak to you today.
Thank you. The last individual who signed up to speak tonight is Jarrett Banks.
Thank you, school board. Thank you, Dr. Edwards, for this opportunity to speak. I'm the Reverend Dr. Jarrett Banks. I'm the Senior Minister of the First Christian Church in Lynchburg that I'm representing tonight. I'm here this evening representing a church which is celebrating 150 years of loving God and our neighbors. So I know I'm going to sound a bit like a preacher tonight. I'm here because I understand that these times in which we live can be confusing, as we live in a divided nation where we are bombarded with fake news and all sorts of misinformation, both by preachers and politicians. I understand that it's a difficult time to serve in any leadership position, such as on a school board, as our political leaders, our president, our governor, our Attorney General, our state representatives, and our city council are often at odds. The federal government gives us laws for policies like Title IX, and a member of the city council tells you to ignore those laws or policies. These are indeed confusing times. The good news is that I proclaim as a preacher of the gospel that our God is not an author of confusion. The great confession of faith of all Christians is Jesus is Lord, which has historically meant Caesar is not. That means Christians allow the teachings of Jesus to guide our lives and not any political agenda. When folks were once confused about what laws to obey, Jesus was asked about the supreme law of God. He responded, "Love God and love your neighbors as yourself, and on these two laws hangs all of the laws in the prophets." In other words, loving God and neighbor trumps every other law. As we know, Jesus was especially, and we know that Jesus was especially concerned for the most vulnerable, for little children, for the poor, and for those bullied and oppressed by culture and politicized religion, those who are often ostracized by the larger community. To further remove all confusion when it comes to what laws we should obey, Apostle Paul wrote about respecting the laws of the government, but then he wrote, "But owe no one anything except love one another, for the one who loves another has fulfilled the law." The commandments are summed up in this one word, "Love your neighbor as yourself." And just in case we're confused to what love is, Paul adds, "Love does no wrong to a neighbor. Therefore, love is fulfilling the law." So the good news is, in these confusing times, when our lawmakers do not agree, when our city council is at odds with one another, good people do not have to be confused. When we are making decisions, we simply need to ask ourselves, "Am I making this decision because of love? Or am I voting this way because I love my neighbor as myself? Do I agree with this policy because I do not want it to do any harm to my neighbors, especially my most vulnerable neighbors?" This is especially important for school boards, for school administrations, because our decisions have the potential to do great harm to the most vulnerable, to our children, and especially our children who are often bullied by culture, politics, and religion. So today, as a representative of a historic faith community in Lynchburg, I pray that you will always make decisions based on your love for all children, especially our most vulnerable children. Pray that you will always be careful not to make any decision that could bring any harm to a child, physical, mental, or emotional, that causes any child to feel ostracized, demeaned, belittled, disgraced in any way, regardless of their religion, their economic status, color of their skin, their gender identity, or their sexual orientation. If we allow the supreme law of God, if we follow the supreme law of God, we must ignore the voices of fear and hate and work to create a school environment that is safe, inclusive, and affirming of all students, including our trans and non-binary students.
Thank you. Okay, we do have two voicemails.
Yes, sir.
Let's do the student one first, please.
Hi, this is. Um, hello. My name is Arden Island, and I'm a student at Heritage High School. I was told I could call here to leave a message to be read during the school board meeting tomorrow night, and I just wanted to say that as a transgender student at Heritage High School, I have received a very welcoming community. The teachers, the counselors, the principals, they've all been very good to me, but every time, I'm a transgender man, every time I walk into the women's restroom, I don't feel like I belong. I pass, I like to say I pass very well as a male, and it kind of freaks people out when I walk in there. People's eyes widen, people gasp, people walk out, people laugh, they giggle, they go into the stalls and hide. I don't think that. I think that Lynchburg City Schools should not, should no longer deny transgender students access to the school locker rooms and restrooms aligned with their gender identity. No matter what hormone reassignment therapy, no matter what surgeries they've been to, I think that transgender students at LCS and in every US state should be allowed to go to the bathroom that their genders align with. If it is known that that person is transgender and that they have an identity, they should be able to go to that restroom. That's how I feel, that's, I feel honestly, genuinely safer that way. We are in trans students are at risk, and we have to protect, we have to protect them. It's that simple. I love my principal, I love Mr. Beatty. I, I love my teachers, I love Mr. City, I love Ms. Harris, I love Gunnery Sergeant Nice, I love all of them. They're all extremely good to me. But the district has got to do more. Thank you.
Okay, and now there's one parent voicemail.
Hi, this message is for the school board meeting taking effect on Tuesday, May the 7th. My name is Samantha City. I am the parent of two students at Sheffield Elementary School. I'm also a member of the Junior League of Lynchburg and the chair of the Period Access Distribution Center Committee. First of all, I want to thank you all so much for addressing the immediate need of period supplies in our schools by installing the dispensers in our schools, and I thank you so much for your continued partnership with us and with Parkview Community Mission in supplying period supplies to our students. I do want to let you all know that the week of May the 20th through the 28th is Period Poverty Awareness Week, where we, when we're developing awareness of period poverty in our community, especially as it impacts our students, because we don't want to see any student not shut the school because they're on their period or they don't have adequate period supplies in their homes. I thank you so much again for your continued partnership. I hope you will continue to partner with us as we address this much-needed problem, and we will continue to spread awareness throughout the rest of the month of period poverty. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, that concludes the public comment period.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next is item G, Dr. Edwards, March 2024, financial reports.
For the financial report, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dammies.
Good evening, Chairman Gupta, members of the board, and Dr. Edwards. In the interest of brevity, I know it's been a, a long meeting this, this evening. My face is hurting from smiling so much from those students, so hopefully my report will be less bad, and everybody will be smiling at the end of it. So as of March, which marks 75% of the fiscal year passing, believe it or not, it's flying by, the percent of revenues collected versus our original appropriation was at 65.57% year-to-date. Revenue collections are down slightly by 4.05, more than the prior year revenue collections for the same month, which, last year, which was 69.62%. These are my notes, I haven't gotten to the expenditure report yet. And I believe that that particular report, I added the lines that you requested, so that is an older report. I believe that the report number two on the board docs would be the ones that has the lines that I'll refer to. There it is, yes. So the amount of expenditures versus original appropriation is 66.90, just slightly above the year-to-date revenue collections. It's less than a half percent of the same month in the prior year. The total expenditures inclusive of encumbrances equates to 98%. So we're tracking underneath 100 of spending all of our expenses up to our budget line this year. The majority of notable variances were discussed in the last month's report. However, there are a couple of honorable mentions that I'll speak to. On the expense report, line 21, the function code 2200, the elevated percent is attributed to moving funding for attendance clerks to function 1,000, and there was a need to do a journal entry to move the associated expense of these positions. That should equalize out in May's report because a JV was done, and so the reporting just needs to catch up with the accounting period. Line 37 of the same report is function 3400, vehicle maintenance service is at 171.84%. That elevated percent is attributed to some encumbrances associated with the vehicle and powered equipment supplies and labor costs. The department is actually looking through those encumbrances to make sure that there aren't additional monies held, and if there are, they, those encumbrances will be released in the month of May so that we get a better line of, of tracking those expenses. Line 39, which is function 3500 for school buses, there's a negative budget available, but that's associated with the purchase of the grant-funded 25 electric school buses, so obviously we had to put the expense in a line that's grant reimbursed. Line 48, function 4200, building services is 118.26%. That negative budget is, budget is associated, again, with some encumbrances that the same department will be looking through and addressing, potentially releasing some of those encumbrances as well. So on the statement of revenue form, there's a couple of items that I wanted to note. I added your requested line numbers on there as well, Dr. Day. Line one and line two, the first two lines on the report of revenue, they're, a portion of the revenues that are in line one with the sales tax receipt, those actually should be coded to the line below it, a portion of them, to the 1/8 sales tax line. Finance staff has done a journal entry to move those funds to the correct line. That is an accounting process that will catch up in, in the May report. I also would like to address lines seven and line eight. The revenue associated with the special ed SOQ, which it's tracking well below what we have budgeted, it was inadvertently coded to infrastructure and operations, and this is why we do monthly financial reports, to catch items like this. Journal entry has been entered to move those funds to the correct revenue line. Moving on to the monthly BOE report, the item that is hot on everyone's mind and everyone is sitting at the, on the edge of their seats, the health insurance receipts netted $1,505,938.79 for March 2024 versus the $1,084,462.10 in February. Expenses, health costs went up in one month by $421,476.69. We've gotten, we almost half a million dollars in claims in March over what we had received in February. In a self-funded package, though, you're going to have the volatility of variable costs and claims like that. We have, the next question I know that's going through everyone's mind is, we have received the preliminary quote from Local Choice Health Benefits Program. I've met with the LCS Insurance Consultant. I've met with the LCS insurance consultant regarding the premium information associated with the employer employee contributions. I've ran some analysis to better educate the finance facilities committee. Going to ask that Dr. Day put that as an agenda item on next week's meeting. Would like to run that, those numbers past that committee as well as invite our insurance consultant to zoom in for any additional information or answers to questions that the committee may have. And so if that's okay with Dr. Day, I'll ask him to adjust the agenda accordingly. One final good thing to note, based on the historical things that happened last year, our grant reimbursements have been submitted through March. So we are up to date, as up to date as we can be right now, on getting those reimbursements in so then we can get them back so that we can get as close, as close to a zero net balance at the end of the fiscal year as we can. We hope not to overspend, we hope not to underspend. We have a goal and we're working hard towards that goal and keeping our finger on the pulse of the finances for the school system. So that's the end of my report. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
So you, you commented on the big boost in medical claims
Yes, sir.
this past month, but the overall balance to this state, it looks like is actually better than it was last year.
It was, uh, because you, um, and, you know, with, in all your wisdom, decided to increase the, um, the premiums. And so you are collecting more receipts
Right, right.
than you did prior year. So I, I, I have some recommendations for the finance committee on maybe looking at some different ways of doing things should we, should the finance and the school board decide to stay self-funded. Hopefully we can, um, control the volatility of some of those claims if we choose not to go to a larger pool as the, as the state funded.
Well, I will put you on the agenda for the
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
From your initial investigation, would the state pool be better?
So there are components of it that are better and some are worse. So, uh, of course, those with larger families are going to see a, a larger cost in premium because you don't know how many kids someone has on a family plan. And the more children, the more relatives you have, that increases, that drives up the cost of healthcare. So they have to hedge their bets, for lack of a better
Sure.
term, to make sure that they cover both all family types there is. Some, part of it looks good, part of it, you know, I think we need to analyze and assess. And, which is one of the reasons why I'm inviting at Dr. Day's approval, the consultant to zoom in and, you know, us take a deeper dive into how it will really affect, um, you know, our finances.
So you, you don't have, what, what, what you're saying is you haven't come up with an overall general opinion of whether or not the pool would be better, just on a cursory level, not going to hold it.
I think there are positives and negatives to stay in both.
Overall. Oh, oh, you're saying, so it's equal.
So there's positives to stay self-funded and positives to go with a larger pooled environment where you have more costs that are equalizing out those costs. But there are, um, some negatives to both plans. And what I want to do is unpack that with the finance committee and get your take on it before I make my recommendations.
Not asking for a recommendation, you're saying on the seesaw.
Yes.
It doesn't lean any way, it's even right now?
Um, yes, because I'm looking at both the positives and the negatives.
That's all I want.
And I'd like the, I'd like the finance committee's input on weighing the positives versus the negatives in each category before, I'm, I'm, I am in the process and have done some analysis that will, I think, set some light bulbs off and, and maybe be able to, to maneuver that and be more nimble in our decision-making.
So basically it's no.
I'm going to take it to the committee.
So I, you know, I, I think the pool, I think going in a larger pool for employee only would, would be seamless. I think the, 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 our employee base that would suffer would be the family plan because obviously it's more expensive and we have a lot of educators that have families. And we want to make sure they're taken care of as well as stay in the black financially. So we, you know, we just need to do the analysis and run the numbers and see.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have one question and nobody else.
Yes, sir.
Our loss ratios are more than one right now. So how do your traditional insurance companies take that? Because they maintain no higher than .9. So when you reached out and got these, was that an issue they had in, because he's saying, you're saying they're even.
Well, on, on some categories, they are even. So there's an administrative cost appended to going into a pool environment that you're not going to pay when you're in self-funded. So the majority of money that we pay are for claims. It is for healthcare. It's not administering a larger type program. So our, um, our $400,000 is, is pretty generous, um, within the state. I think there's only one other school system that is a, has a higher lost ratio than we do, which is, I'd said at a half million. So I, I think the analysis that I'll provide you will look at it. And I, I think it'll help give us some, you know, some insight on which direction we need to go. And that way the finance committee can recommend to the school, the full school board, um, how we want to proceed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So I'll read the discussion. I have, uh, the question is Ms. Shepard on line.
There she is.
Good evening ma'am, how are you?
Here I am.
So when I, when I saw this report and I saw 30 resignations, my jaw just dropped. Help me out, where do we stand in terms of recruiting and filling back those positions? And have you done a survey of these teachers, why are they leaving? The exit interviews?
Yes.
So I'm assuming you'll be sharing.
It might be easier if I come downstairs.
If you'd like to come downstairs and talk to us in person, that'd be fun.
That'd be wonderful, yeah.
I'll be right back.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dr. Carter.
Well, when I saw that list, I said, wow, it's a shorter list. My first year, it was like two pages. So I, I was thinking we were doing pretty good.
You're more optimistic than I am. Because when I saw that list of 30 resignation, then the recruitment was like one or two. And we are in month of May right now, we'll be closing schools on May 24th. And, um, so my issue was, uh, has every district hired the teachers they wanted to hire for fall or they're still on the, in the market for us to be able to backfill these positions?
Most people are hiring. We have the added challenge of having to, um, have some conference, conferences with staff regarding some RIF positions at the, from the operating budget, not, not just cares, but operating. Um, and based on the policies, those folks have to be placed first before we post hire and, and, and so we have not, with the exception of a few select positions, we, our hands have been tied in terms of being able to post while we go through the process of trying to place staff who are in some of those division level cuts that were 9.5 and there's some school level cuts as well.
Welcome downstairs.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. So, uh, forgive me for missing part of your commentary, Dr. Edwards. But we are not recruiting right now at all. We do have a freeze on our job postings. Because we do have individuals that have been notified that they are being displaced. We have shut down the virtual academy. Those individuals need opportunities to be assigned elsewhere in the division. And we do not want to open up job postings that external candidates may be applying for when we have internal candidates that have a need. So the only thing that we're currently posting for is sped positions and grant-funded positions. Everything else is on a freeze. We have begun notifying individuals if they were being impacted either by job elimination due to the CARES funding, no longer continuing, uh, the closing of, um, the virtual academy and those kinds of things. So we are seeing a mass exodus voluntarily because of the uncertainty in the division at this time. We did communicate on the personnel agenda, yes, a very large number of individuals that have resigned. We've got a few retirees as well that are just looking to, uh, move on to their opportunity to enjoy life outside of the workplace. But we've seen quite a few resignations just because of the uncertainty in our division at this time. We have communicated the transfers or realignments, reassignments of individuals that were displaced from the virtual academy. Ms. Pew has done an amazing job of having those conversations with respect and dignity and allowing those individuals to understand that this is not a performance-based concern, but that it is just the byproduct of that program no longer continuing. Uh, and trying to find, uh, other opportunities for them to serve our students in the division.
Ms. Pew, what?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up and say that all, um, staff from the virtual academy minus one have been, uh, placed and have, um, either, um, decided not to return and that's only one staff member. The others have actually been placed in positions. We had conversations with some department staff, um, last week. And so they were given until tomorrow to, um, let us know if they want to accept the options, some of the options, um, that we gave them in terms of placement and, and positions. So hopefully after tomorrow, or if not by the end of this week, we will be able to lift that hiring freeze and post, begin posting and interviewing and hiring for those positions. Because we will have placed most of the people that we needed to because their jobs were eliminated.
Yeah, if, if I could just add to that, um, we, just as a reminder, we do have a significant budget, uh, concern. And so there will be a number of positions that will no longer be a part of the school division anymore after this, this school year. So you're seeing a number of vacancies here. We're going to obviously try to eliminate vacant positions first before we, uh, reduce positions as well. So you'll note also that, uh, as we transition to a seven-period day, there just are simply fewer positions that are needed. So, uh, some of those positions will not be hired as, as we get to the next school year. So, uh, we're, we're working through that. Uh, there's a lot of moving parts, uh, in terms of the positions that we're going to need. But just wanted you to, you can't just look at the, at the sheet. There's, there's a little more to it.
No, I'm not looking at, what I was looking for was, without naming a school, and your first HR report had seven resignations from that school. In the addendum, you got three more resignations.
Yes, sir.
So the school has only 12 teachers, uh, then one-to-one placements are not, are a possibility or may not be a possibility. So I'm assuming we have a plan to
Absolutely.
have that, have that school operational.
Absolutely, we do. Yes, sir. And several of the individuals, um, from the virtual academy were offered, were offered multiple opportunities. And one of them, uh, one of those opportunities could very well have been at TC Miller as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clark, would you please call them?
Mr. Jalio.
Wait, oh, we're voting on the adoption of the consent.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Shepard.
Mr. Jalio?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Cross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes, yes.
Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Ms. Lowry?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is school board member reports, uh, finance and facilities, Dr. Day.
Okay, I'm trying to catch up with you. Give me a minute. Could, could, um, could we go on and let me come back to this? I have to find my.
Gob school, Mrs. Lowry.
Okay, um, we had our meeting, May 1st. Some things that were on, um, that came up is that the scanning electric, electronic microscope, the SEM, will be purchased and replaced this summer, or will be replaced this summer, it's been purchased. After the general assembly decision, the 25, 26 year, there may be a $300 increase for each student. It has been the same at $4,700 for 10 years. So, but with inflation, it could increase. So there is a possibility it could be less though. So we're waiting to hear from, um, to, so after the general assembly makes their decision. And also, um, let me see. Okay, um, the science fair was held March 9th. The Virginia State Science Fair held on the 13th, had nine students. A stipend was paid for each student, um, to, that was hosted by Old Dominion, um, University. Uh, CVGS Research Symposium was held on April 18th, um, at the Schule Hall, University of Lynchburg campus. And the students did a very nice job. I was, um, one of the people that participated. The Virginia Junior Academy of Science, the VJAS, um, is scheduled for May 3rd and 4th. And the College of William and Mary will host a Virgil, they did this virtual, uh, virtually, a virtual symposium. The International Science Engineering Fair will be held in Los Angeles, California on May 12th through the 17th. Lindsay, um, Lindley, I'm sorry, Crosby from UC Glass High School qualified to attend this fair. All expenses have been covered. So, um, the CVS, the CVGS faculty met on April 23rd and to select the recipients of the two Ansee Wells Memorial Scholarships. These foundation-funded 60,000 merit and need-based scholarships are awarded to one male and one female, um, each year. Also, May 23rd is the junior awards ceremony and it's scheduled for 9:00 AM. And our next governing meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, August 7th, uh, 2024 at 1:00 PM.
Thank you. Laurel, Dr. Carter?
The Laurel Regional School, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. We just, um, voted on a budget. We know that things are not perfectly set, but, um, if there are no major changes, then Laurel's budget would already be approved. And they're already looking at also the 3% increase for their staff to remain competitive. Laurel also purchased, will purchase a bus, school bus for their school trips. Prior to that, they had to go to each county to see if they could borrow a bus. You know how difficult that is to try to get a bus from all the surrounding counties as well as Lynchburg. So now they will have a 16, well, 15, 16 passenger bus that doesn't require a CDL, but of course the drivers will be trained. They had graduation, the graduation will be May the 28th. And there are two Lynchburg City School students that will be, be graduating at 6 o'clock. Also the Laurel Prom and Lynchburg City featured, Lynchburg City Schools, they're featured, the prom photographs are featured on the Lynchburg City Schools Facebook page. And as the Heritage High School representative stated, the Heritage High School football team was instrumental in just being there and helping out, which is always great. And the Laurel students, they are going to create, they're creating a mural at the Mazembe Square. And so that'll be awesome to see and we'll keep looking for that. Next year, Lynchburg City Superintendent and a board member will be the Chair of the Laurel Regional Committee for next year.
Thank you. STEM Academy.
STEM Academy, our next meeting will be, um, well, I'll come back to that. But we, um, the commencement is going to be May the 15th. commencement is going to be May the 15th at CBCC, and the interesting thing is that the students will graduate there before high schools. Isn't that great? And Monday, May the 6th, there's going to be the senior banquet and awards ceremony, and our next meeting is May the 21st. And also, there was an internship appreciation or presentation April the 24th, and our next meeting is May the 21st.
Thank you. Lekka, Mr. Tross.
New report.
Thank you. Pi, Mr. DePaul and Mrs. Lowry.
The board is always looking for new people to, to be members and to develop partnerships. And we have several new members that are on the slate to be invited to be on the board coming up at the next meeting. The next meeting is Tuesday, June 11th. Well, that's the summer planning workshop, but the, for the next meeting, when they, when they do declare, do determine it, it'd be good for any, anybody who has the time to stop by and, and learn a little bit more about what Pi is about. There are, we're always looking for relationship building. If you have some suggestions. Personally, I like the way the vector, vector space, vector resource is, is working with a lot of the students, and it provides a lot of opportunity. It's really a great, a great program, a great business, and I just haven't gotten a membership yet myself. I'm just waiting for the time to do it. I think they're so, such a fantastic organization. But we are, we're always looking for more places like that, more people to, to be involved with that type of, of work. There's summer work sessions, there's where we're going to be evaluating what partnership really means when it comes down to Pi, Partners in Education. One of the celebrations we're going to be putting out is that they're going to have a cake and decorations for student celebration on May 21st. That's going to be at EC Glass. If anyone has any ideas or wants to contribute or make references or referrals, we're going to be open, we're always open for those types of ideas. Just reach out and we'll do what we can to make things work better for the students of LCS.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Tross and Mr. Jalil.
This past, let's see, was on April 28th, Sunday, we had our Lynchburg Education Foundation Honored Dinner, and I was delighted to be there and got the opportunity to meet these wonderful students where we recognized our top achievers from both EC Glass, or top achieving graduates from both EC Glass and Heritage High School. It's a wonderful dinner, wonderful food, some excellent speakers there that gave us some insight into how to succeed and gave the children some insight into how to succeed. And then we got to see that our own Tish Lowry, Ms. Lowry was an honored guest. So at this, at this dinner, the students get to choose or get to pick one of their past instructors, or it could be staff person, principals, or what have you, to join them at the dinner. And Ms. Lowry was there, and the student that you taught, what grade was that student?
Norwell Harper, first grade.
First grade.
First grade.
So we talk about the impact that our teachers have on our students. This young person went all the way back to first grade and honored Ms. Lowry with her presence.
He literally said that she was the one who taught him how to read, and he was thankful for that.
That's exactly right. So the impact that our staff, our teachers have upon these young people's lives is tremendous. I think we saw that with the children here today. The presentation's really nice. So kudos to Lynchburg Education Foundation for that dinner. We had a wonderful time. Food was fantastic. The camaraderie was fantastic. I learned from my son, I gave a, I guess, an award to one of the children there, and he thought, this young man, that I was a principal at one of the schools. That was pretty good. I was like, I wish I don't have the skill set or the intelligence to be a principal at a Lynchburg City School for sure. And kudos to all those principals that showed up. They do a fantastic job. So there you are.
Thank you, Mr. Tross. Beacon of Hope, Mrs. Preston and Mr. Andrews.
Beacon of Hope, and I think we talked about this a little bit, but Beacon of Hope has undergone a transition. After, after being in place for 14 years under the leadership of Laura Hamilton, the new leader at Beacon of Hope is Leidra McQueen. Leidra has worked with Beacon of Hope for the past 10 years, and she brings extensive experience and knowledge and just connection with the students and the, and the, and various schools. They did do a transition link, which you can, you can get on the Beacon of Hope Facebook page or on their website, or if it's something you'd like one of us to send you. I think both, both of us have, have a link to it. They're also gearing up for their summer internship program, and if you recall from last year, they did internships programs. It's going to last from June 3rd through the 28th. Local businesses will host 95 student interns across the city, which is a really exciting thing because it gives the kids an opportunity to get work experience as well as to investigate what careers they might be interested in. Okay, you want to take it from there?
Yeah. So Decision Day is here. Celebration's to honor the class of 2024 and their plans after graduation. The Beacon of Hope will celebrate students headed directly into the workforce, military service, four- and two-year colleges and technical and trade programs. Beacon will host Decision Day celebrations at EC Glass on the 10th of this month, which is in three days, in Heritage on the 17th. And of course, the eighth-grade college and career readiness symposium is scheduled for the 21st through the 23rd of this month, which will host each middle school on the campus of the University of Lynchburg. Students will rotate through various sessions, including covering topics such as college career exploration and connecting to their dreams, which is, I think is a big deal. Representatives from colleges across the Commonwealth, as well as the Lynchburg Fire Department, Central Health, and other local businesses will be in attendance as well. So that's it.
Thank you. Academic Success Committee, Mr. Jalil.
The Virginia Literary Act was the prime topic of our last meeting, and I was very pleased with the administration going around and planning to teach and update our staff and teachers to use the parameters of the regulations in the new Virginia Literary Act and the new curriculum. I'm just pleased with all of those things put together. So I will leave the rest of it up to Tish as far as the rest of the meeting, but that part of it was exciting to see and hear about.
I was going to say, what did we, I didn't keep those notes. We were supposed to do them. Oh, academic success, okay, yes. And Mr. Ferguson, he came, he didn't come to the Academic Success Committee, though.
He didn't.
That was the, that's the
No.
Hi.
That was the Discipline Committee. I'll report on that in a minute.
Okay.
Will you move on?
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The new curriculum and the Virginia Literary Act was the main topic that I understood from that.
And that was it?
I doubt it, but that was
Thank you. Next one is the Ad Hoc Discipline and Policy Review Committee.
Well, can I back up and do the Finance and Facilities Committee first?
Yes.
I apologize for being sort of disorganized this evening. There's been an awful lot going on, and I'm, to be frank, struggling to keep up with it all. Finance and Facilities Committee last met on April 23rd. There were a number of things that were pretty much information pieces, some of which I think has already come to the board. Mr. Waterka presented about athletic training grant. We had some discussion of the operating budget, but there was no action to be taken at time, at that time. We're, we're still waiting for more accurate information from both the city and the state. We did have some discussion with our CFO about information that, whether the board and the committee was getting the information they needed to make the decisions that they have to make. And Ms. Jamis is going to, is working on some improvements in that direction. So that's, I think, an ongoing conversation. I guess I would just invite any board member who has specific ideas of what financial information would be useful to them that they are not currently getting, to communicate that to me and Mrs. Jamis, to assist in designing how we might improve things in the future. At that point, we were still waiting to get the quote on our health insurance options, which we now have, and I guess the committee will hear that at its next meeting. One thing that's been being pushed back to the back burner since the fall is you remember in the fall, we, in addition to the grant associated with the safe room at EC Glass, there was also the grant from Dick's Sporting Goods. And one of the issues that came up at the time is that we felt the need to be consistent in what criteria we look at when the board receives a request to approve a gift or a grant. And although we, we haven't made a final decision yet, we do have some ideas about that that were generated last fall, and that's on our budget for our next meeting, which will be our final meeting. So that would be, if we decide to make recommend that, changes, that would be policy KHZ dash R. So we're, I think we're moving in the direction of trying to formulate something specific to recommend to the board in that regard. So that's the end of my report on
Thank you.
Finance and Facilities.
Ad Hoc Committee.
So here I am again. So lots of things have happened here. You may recall that our previous meeting, we had held early. I'm trying to remember the date. When was our previous meeting? The one where we met at 4:00 in the afternoon, everybody was invited to come. We did have a presentation from Mr. Ferguson on the behavior training that we are providing to teachers in the classroom. The slides from his presentation are accessible to you. They are attached to the meeting minutes of our meeting, which was on the 29th of April. So if you want to see those, you have to be logged into Board Docs at this point because until the committee meets again and approves the minutes, they're not publicly accessible. We did talk, the main topic at that meeting was a discussion of cell phone policies. And if you recall, the Discipline Policy Review Committee was contemplating changing our cell phone policy, which currently prohibits the use of cell phones throughout the entire school day for both elementary and middle school, but at the high school level allows them to use it between classes and in non-instructional spaces like hallways. So we were contemplating making that policy to be disallowing use of cell phones throughout the entire day. But the principals were pretty unanimous in, in not supporting that. But they, we did have a lot of discussion about a policy that EC Glass had before COVID, which was a policy in which there was a procedure for confiscating students' phones if they were abusing them in class. That was, at least as I understand, it was minimal in what it required of the teachers. There was a separate group of teachers. At that time, they were still on a seven, seven-period schedule, not block scheduling, and that meant that there were some periods in the day where some teachers didn't have duties. So they, those teachers would rotate through, serving on what they called the chatty wagon, which went around the classrooms. And when a teacher had a, a student that was inappropriately using their cell phone, they'd call for the chatty wagon, and they would come and confiscate the phone. So the teacher didn't have to do that. It would be taken away and either returned to the student at the end of the day when they were leaving on the first offense, or parent required to come in. So there was a fair bit of support on the part of the teachers that with a kind of program like that, it, it, it would be successful. I called and talked to the former EC Glass principal, Rose Flor, who is now at a private school setting, and, but she was principal during the time that that, well, I don't think she, she was assistant principal during the time that that policy was in place, and asked her what she thought about this chatty wagon policy. And she said she thought it was great and that it worked. And since we are now returning to a seven-period schedule in the fall, it seems that we have an opportunity to reinstitute that policy. So the Discipline Policy Committee has not made a decision about that yet. So we're not prepared to make a recommendation. I'm just reporting to you the information I have at this point. This afternoon, immediately before this meeting, we did have a special meeting because we wanted to be able to bring to the board tonight some recommendations about policy changes related to incidents of physical violence or threats of physical violence, specifically against teachers and staff and adult volunteers in the schools. So the committee did meet, and we looked at three policies. KNAJ, which concerns reporting to law enforcement officials. KFC, which concerns, let me, KFC is a student conduct policy. And then JGD, JGE, and I apologize for not remembering them all by virtue of their acronyms, which is the policy for student suspension or expulsion. So in brief, the kinds of changes that we want to recommend are making physical violence against a teacher, a staff member, an adult volunteer helping in the schools, make that an offense that is subject to expulsion. Now, I think I understood from the staff that were present at the meeting that currently, they largely operate that way under the existing policies, but we're trying to put this in place in the, in the, by making some policy modifications. Also would, included would be incidents of these types would be reported to the School Board Discipline Committee. All incidents of this type would be reported to the School Board Discipline Committee. Now, that does not mean the School Board Discipline Committee would be involved in interfering with the administration of whatever consequences. It's just that the School Board Discipline Committee wants to know how many incidents of this type are occurring so that they can execute their oversight capacity and perhaps make recommendations to the policy board. So what we want to do is, is recommend some changes to these three policies to take effect in the fall. We want to ask for approval of these changes tonight, but with the understanding that the appropriate work group will look at these and bring back finalized versions of the wording at a future board meeting for approval. So I'm not quite sure how to do this because you have not seen the specific changes that, that we have in mind. I'm only giving you a very rough verbal description of them.
Do you want to delay to the work session till everybody has a chance?
I can do that. I can, I can send them, send out copies of it to the whole board tomorrow, and they can see for themselves what the changes are.
So in the policy wordage, what you're asking for is right now that we use the word "may."
We, yeah.
So that word will
Right.
be replaced with the word "shall."
Shall. So there's, we want to make it mandatory expulsion. Of course, there's always room for special circumstances to be considered. There's always the appeals process to the School Board Discipline Committee. Mr. DePaul, did you want to comment?
Yes, it was purposely put in there that due process is not going to be averted. We have due process because it all goes through the appeal process. It's not that it is without consideration. So everybody, there is no way that it's going to, it's automatic, but then there's automatic appeal. So due process, excuse me, due process is guaranteed.
Have we looked at the statue, the Virginia statue?
Yes.
And it allows school districts to
Yes.
do that as long as there's a due process?
Yes.
And, and
Go ahead.
And it sounds as if that it's something that we're doing now, for the most part anyway. We're just kind of putting in a policy for
Yeah, that's, that's what staff communicated to us, yes. Yes.
Dr. Carter.
I'm sorry.
So is this, is this group taking precedence over the policy group that already looks at this?
This group has taken the initiative to recommend some policy changes.
Okay, so what
And we're asking that the, the appropriate policy work groups then review the changes we're recommending.
So this, would this be student services? These, so if, if, if I'm on the student services, so if I, if we These, so if I'm on the student services, so if I, if we say this is too punitive, I know there was a push first to try to find a way to make sure we're doing restorative services. Expulsion is serious. And I know a lot of students, when we did, when we were really involved in student discipline, when we served on those committees, listening to, hearing that someone hit a teacher and then seeing that the student was so upset and the teacher, they weren't really aiming at the teacher, but it was, just happened. So, so we're saying that if that child hits, regardless of what state of mind and whether it was intentional or not, only one time that I see that there was really a true intentional, where the teacher was just standing there and the student just hit her for no apparent reason that we could see, and we couldn't see any precipitating events. So we're, expulsion is a serious thing.
I'm looking for the?
And the difference between using the word "may" and "shall" is critical in that particular instance.
We have that already when it comes to carrying a firearm. We have it already when it comes to drugs. And we're just extending that to involve a physical violence against a teacher and we still maintain, even with the first two, with drugs and with firearms, they still have due process.
So let me read to you the paragraph that refers to this.
Well, because we're going to have time to look at it. I know this is too serious to vote on tonight. But the, the other thing is, are we putting this above student to student?
What do you mean?
Student to student incidents versus student to staff?
I think so, that striking a teacher is a more serious offense than striking another student.
I would like to look at those, take those.
You're going to, you're going to, yes.
So let's circulate, and then we bring it?
So I will forward those, I have more to say, but regarding those three, I will send copies to the committee, to the full board. And, and request that the appropriate work groups look at those in quick enough fashion for the board to be able to make a decision.
All right.
Also, a couple other things. I've said that we are still considering the cellphone policy but aren't prepared to make a recommendation. One other policy that we have been talking about, but is policy JFCA, which concerns, that provides provisions under which a teacher may request that a student be removed from their class, not necessarily on a one-time basis, but on a long-term basis. There's already a policy in place for this. And in the survey that we constructed, conducted of teachers in the fall, many teachers said they weren't aware of this policy. They didn't understand how it, how it works, had never heard of it before. So we're trying to figure out what to do with that. And we have some, some possible adjustments to it, but we didn't have time this afternoon to discuss it, so we aren't ready to bring that forward. But I'm just telling you that this is in the works. We want to understand better what that policy really means, what, what teachers really need to understand about what it means and how to use it in a situation, and what the, what the practicalities of it are. You know, if, if every teacher in a school doesn't want this particular student in their class because they are always a conflict, well, what, what do we do? So there are some difficult aspects of this, and we're trying to get a better understanding of all those things before we come forward with the recommendation. So I'm just telling you where that stands, yes.
I know when we, that policy, when we reviewed that policy, we've always had some hiccups with that policy, just how it's worded. And that policy has been there, but regarding just the removal of students, if someone upsets you and you want them removed right away, and how, how that really is implemented.
Yeah, so it's a tricky one.
We need to look at more than just the wording.
Yeah.
A question. Not that anyone's trying to step on toes of one committee over another, but the ad hoc committee, the Discipline Ad hoc Committee does set policy, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it recommends to the board.
Recommend, that's my point, it recommends to the board. And not that it's when, you're on policies, policy committee, and that doesn't step on any toes. We're recommending it to the board of what the board wants. And where is the semantic crossover of stepping on your committees versus what the board wants to have? Is it just word crafting at that point? Just so we can, just so it clarifies for me, what are we, where's the gray line?
The policy work group I have served on is looks at regular VSB recommendation for changes.
Okay. Policy. So we're not stepping on Dr. Carter's toes?
Well, it's not me, it's the?
The committee.
It's the, what's it called, the social?
Work group.
Student services work group.
Okay.
The board will make the final decision about any policy changes, but usually we get the advice of the work groups, want them to look at it before we do that, so.
So when you forward information to us, you're going to forward to us the drafts that you have prepared?
That's right.
Will you also forward to us the names of the other policies that you're looking at? Because that'll give us an opportunity to just, just take a peek at them to see if we have some ideas or suggestions or whatever.
Okay, I'd be glad to do that.
Is it almost eight o'clock? Would you like to take a five-minute break or continue?
Continue.
Continue.
What's?
Right.
I got my snack, I'm good. Let's go.
Two and a half, two, three hours. Five-minute break? Dr. Carter says we listen to Dr. Carter.
I vote with Carter.
Five-minute break, we'll come back in five minutes.
Perfect.
And a couple of new items we'll figure out. I think yours is one, and you had?
Well, no, mine is already in here.
And then the discussion of budget.
Okay, yeah.
That's old business, so we'll do it after the new.
Thank you, sweetness.
Yeah, I always have mine down here.
Wherever you want to put mine.
Yours will be the policy item number five. There are four policies. So there are four policies for discussion?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yours is number five.
J one, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, Student Service Policy Updates and Dr. Brown is on the line.
I have arrived.
Good evening, members of the board. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay. I am just here to present a couple of policy updates. But first, I would just like to offer my sincere appreciation for all of our teachers, educators out there for Teacher Appreciation Week. It's also Nurses Appreciation Week and tomorrow is School Nurses Appreciation Day. So if you get the chance or opportunity, please wish all of our school nurses a Happy School Nurse Appreciation Day as they are doing a lot of really hard work and one of our policies does impact them and something that they take care of that I personally am not capable of doing. So as you've all had the chance to review the policies in advance, nothing major here that really warrants a lot of attention or discussion, in my humble opinion, but it was just some policy changes based off wording and some cross-referencing to align with the SBA policies and suggested changes. There was one strike through with the pediculosis, which is the lice policy that we have, and it was just making it, eliminating the barrier for parents and students because we already have one step in place when the parent meets with the school nurse and checks their students to see, make sure that they are net-free when they are having an outbreak of lice. So I will, I know it's been a long meeting, I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Questions for Dr. Brown, go ahead.
I have a question. I don't have the policy statement in front of me, but regarding JHC-RZ, there was an item five that was struck out.
Yes, sir, that's the net policy, the lice policy I just mentioned, where it was stating, and it was just an extra step and barrier for our parents because they're already meeting with the school nurses on step six and step seven. We just didn't believe that it was a need to have that extra step in there because they're already communicating with the school nurses and complying to make sure that they're net-free before they return to school.
So when a student returns to school after having received treatment, is there some kind of certification that they no longer have the lice on them? Is there any kind of screening to read, admit them or whatever is appropriate?
Yes, sir, that's step six and step seven. That's where they are checked by the school nurse who, you know, certified health professional. And it is a visible check that they are able to see, and they do a really thorough job at that.
Okay, and then, let's see. IGBH, this was about alternative programs. And I just wondered if you could describe for me, I know we have Fort Hill, but what other alternative programs do we have?
All the LCS Restore programs. We also have the Transition Program, TAP program, for elementary students, Fort Hill Community School, Restorative Academy Secondary, Restorative Academy Elementary, and we also have the Restorative Suspension Center. All those are all alternative programs.
Alternative programs refers to all those things? Okay. All right, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Next one is curriculum instruction, Ms., I'm sorry, I'm taking.
I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Pew.
We have three, and actually, I'd like to do the first and the last one. The first is IC/ID. All of these are VSPA updates. The first one just has a wording update and then adding a cross-reference to EBCD. The last one, JOB, is Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires, and again, that's a VSPA wording update. And then the one in the middle, IKB, Parental Involvement with Instruction. It was a legal update referencing a homework policy. And at the time, when the committee met, we were also looking at and reviewing the homework policy, and we had great discussion on that. VSPA is suggesting that we, they are deleting the policy on homework. And so we brought it to the committee to discuss whether we should delete it or alter it, and there were lots of great conversation, but we decided to pull it and we'll meet again in June because there's some work that needs to be done from the perspective of perhaps grading and some instructional pieces, some curriculum instruction pieces. So the cross-reference to IKB on policy IKB was our suggested change. So we will leave that there. If we, if we end up removing the homework policy, then we'll have to go back and strike that cross-reference. But at this point, we wanted to make sure that parental assistance with instruction had the cross-reference to the IKB homework policy as it stands. Other than that.
So we are acting on just that one change now, but we're going to consider it additionally in the future?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But this is where Mr. Trust.
Pursuant to my amendment to the agenda, and I sent everyone on the school board an email with a policy that I developed. Just by way of background, let me give you this. I think everybody has a copy of it, but I printed it out. If anyone would like a hard copy, I have that for everyone as well.
You could give me one so I don't have to fill it.
No, no problem. I'll just, let me just hand them out. I think I printed one also for Reed and Amy as well. They wish. You okay? Okay.
Thank you.
What this is, the title of it is Honor Roles and Graduation Honors. And basically, my gist, and I've identified that in this policy, is to kind of make sure we recognize the students that are doing well from an academic standpoint, on an honor role level, and then also recognize the students at the commencement ceremonies. Now, quite frankly, we're doing, I think we're doing the majority of this as it is now, and maybe this pew can give me a little guidance. I wanted to make sure we established some type of honor roll from the sixth grade level up. And I'm, are we, are we doing a sixth grade to eighth grade honor roll at this point?
I believe so, yes, sir.
All right. And what Wendell, Delegate Walker, talked about, I know he sends out letters to people, I believe it's just high school.
To all of our students.
To all of them.
Elementary, all the way through.
All right. So basically, what I'm doing is I would like to put in policy what we're kind of doing now, just so it's there, with the exception of, I know at Heritage High School, I think some of the things that Beatty does is very nice. He establishes, not only you have the valedictorian and the salutatorian speaking, but he also recognizes some of the academic achievers early on in the graduation. I thought that was a nice touch that he did. So I wanted to make sure we maybe put that process over to EC Glass High School because I know in the past, there's been some different thoughts on how they're recognizing the valedictorian and salutatorian. And I do think I would like to see some recognition for the distinction honors and different levels of honors based upon the GPA at our commencement ceremony at EC Glass as well. And correct me if I'm wrong, isn't Mr. Beatty doing that at Heritage High School? I know at the graduation, he has some of the kids sit up front and he recognizes them as having a certain level of distinction based upon the GPA.
They have a medal that he awards as part of that ceremony.
And I'd like to see that just kind of be more consistent across both high schools. And I thought it was a very nice touch, and the students seem to really enjoy that. And that's, in essence, what this policy does. In developing this policy, I did talk to Ms. Ewing at the Virginia VSPA, and then she gave me some guidance and sent me out to do a little bit of a study across other school districts in the state that do different things of this nature. So based upon that survey of the other policies, some input from Ms. Ewing, this is what I've come up with. And I'm happy to entertain any questions and really maybe get some feedback from either Dr. Wodak or Ms. Pew in terms of, is this that far outside of what we're doing now? I don't think it is, but I just want to make sure it's put into a policy so that it's being done consistently.
I don't think it is far from what we are doing, but I would also want to make sure that our principals have an eye on it because if we're asking, I see here number three, that you want this to take effect beginning with the 2024 commencement.
Right.
I want Dr. Rule to have an opportunity to make changes, and I'm not sure that in the short two weeks that we have until graduation, that for him to recognize all of this in the graduation ceremony is realistic, given, given the end of the school year and the things that have to be done. So I would really appreciate the opportunity to at least speak with Dr. Rule and Dr., Mr. Beatty, just to make sure that this is in alignment and that we can do these things. I'm not really sure we can make it happen this, this year.
And I'm, that is not, I don't think that is as important as that we get this thing. I recognize that this is asking a lot, and I certainly don't want to burden staff for this, but I think in that, I don't have a problem with whether it's implemented by 2024 or not.
I just have a question, just because I'm looking at B, so if the valedictorian does not want to speak, then you'd go to the salutatorian, I guess, then you go to the third person and down the rank. If you're looking at the end of a marking period and you're trying to give kids time to say whether or not they want you, you kind of.
Do something.
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned that if I am sixth, if it gets all the way down to me, then how many days have gone by before?
Granted.
I'm closer, so that may be something that I think the building principals and school counselors and even the senior, I think it's more senior advisors too, who kind of work through, because they practice their speeches and do some things there, so.
And I agree with that, and I wanted to make sure there was some process that I would recommend, recognizing that at some point, there's not time for people to prepare for a speech, and we certainly, certainly want to do that. So maybe we have some endpoint that says at this point, you know.
I think there have been times when, when students chose not to speak.
Absolutely.
And then a forensics kid, for example, was given the opportunity to speak, which wasn't a bad idea because obviously there are students that, that would, would do a good job of it. But this doesn't give you any latitude for making that kind of change. So if we could maybe alter the wording a little bit so that there's some level of flexibility.
For, and that's, I think it's, and maybe what we do is we say, okay, if the valedictorian or, you know, first or second and third don't want to speak, then we turn it over to staff to find somebody. I don't want to change what EC Glass is doing currently in terms of having the student body pick some people to speak. And maybe that's, you know, the staff can decide, hey, we have enough people already speaking. If the, you know, one, two, and three don't want to do it, or one and two don't want to do it, then we have the staff pick, which goes along. I just want to have that opportunity available for the number one and number two class rank
At first change.
to speak if they wish.
Maybe that should be the modification to it.
To, which is to.
Either or, period.
Either or.
Because they have other people speaking.
Right.
I apologize for.
I have concern with this policy, not because of the policy itself, but each school has their own culture. And EC Glass, I even spoke with Susan Morrison, and she, this came up before about why doesn't Glass do this or do that, and Heritage does, and they even have the valedictorian speak. But Glass, they have a different process where they pick three different people. And this seems like we're going to force Glass to, to do what Heritage does, and we're going to force it through a policy. And I just do have problems with that because they, they do not do that, because they already have the honors for the students at Heritage and Glass, the 15 top students and their valedictorians, salutatorians in there. But I know, and I was shocked because I thought it was great too, and Susan said, no, this is the way we've done it, this is the way the students have wanted it, when she was principal and all through, and so why do we want to now force? And this policy will pretty much force EC Glass. Now, I'm a Heritage person, but I'm going to pick up for them, this stuff. This will force them to now say, we, we've got to do this because we have a policy.
Mr. Jalil, go ahead. You had your hand up, you want to speak up?
That was before she talked. Now I can.
All right.
Wait.
Mrs. Lauren.
But Elizabeth Morrison taught a while ago. Maybe the principal now would be okay with it. Maybe you should get input from Glass and see what they say.
And we don't, and I still want to keep, I don't want to change what Glass is doing currently in terms of allowing the student body to do that. I think I spoke to that. But I think an extra few minutes is not going to hurt anybody in a graduation commencement ceremony that lasts a couple of hours. And that's really what we're looking at here, more than extra three minutes of speech and one minute, or less than that of transition time. So I recognize exactly what you're saying. I think just to make it more consistent and quite frankly, more traditional in terms of what's done across the state. If you look at all, you know, lots of different school systems, that's more traditionally the undertaking. But I recognize what you're saying and appreciate it and certainly don't want to change that particular part of EC Glass culture.
This is not something you just brought up. This was an issue you brought up last year too, right?
Well, directly with, directly, I think, with the staff at EC Glass, yeah.
The valedictorian needs to speak.
Yes, yes. And the valedictorian, at that time, the family approached me about that as well.
So last year, and I, we, actually, we about to have those conversations specifically for Glass. Of their three, three speakers, I believe, one spot was offered to the valedictorian to speak, and they declined.
Yeah.
Speaking, and then they just chose, I think the students choose the other, they vote on the speakers. And to my knowledge, that was, we just, that's the plan going forward. Like, we just told the new principal that this is how we do it. So if, if, and I'm sure Heritage the same, if the valedictorian really said no, that they wouldn't force a child to speak. So if that is the process that, and we're going to meet with them to kind of go over this, is there a need for this? If that, do you have to codify that if that's what they're doing, just because that's what we did last year and we said, this, do this from this point forward?
Well, who knows how the future holds, but if it's codified in a policy, it's going to be done that way. So basically, what I'm doing is making sure it's going to be done that way in the future, if that's the will of the board. I mean, I grant it, and I think that's a good approach, but we're going to, you know, if the will of the board is to have it codified, you know, that's my preference anyway.
I guess, to me, the issue is, is speaking at commencement intended to honor the academic achievers in the school?
And I would.
And in my mind, the answer is yes. I mean, there may be other categories of students that also you want to distinguish in some way, but I think there should be at every graduation, a place for the, those who really were stellar in their academic performance to be highlighted.
And that's what we're kind of trying to codify.
Yeah, so I don't think this is preventing students who maybe, maybe they were athletic stars, and they have something to say. That, this isn't preventing that. This is just saying, we want to be sure that the high academic achievers are represented in the graduation ceremony.
Taking everyone's position into consideration and understanding the time constraint for all of this, could a change to this, just for 2024, be somehow wordcrafted to say that the valedictorian and salutatorian will be provided, no, valedictorian or the salutatorian will be provided the opportunity to speak? If the valedictorian doesn't want to, then it goes to the salutatorian, and if the salutatorian doesn't want to, then they, we don't go down the list. But just for this, for times, say, time constraints, if we were to do something like that and give both principals, Dr. Rule, just have the two or three minute inclusion to the couple hour long process, to just make sure that it is for now, and then we can wordcraft it better.
Yep, exactly. And I take, you mean, Dr. Edwards said that's the plan going forward, and I just, and I take her at her word, I mean, I believe that.
Right.
I'm just trying to get this, it's no, you know, the number three with the, with, you know, make it do this, this commencement, it's not that important, I don't think. I think it's more important to get it right.
Right.
And.
Well, I was just doing it for the sake of when you, when it mentioned about being codified.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think that's good.
Thank you. I think the discussion has started.
Yep, very good.
Thank you. Next is Governor's Policy, Dr. Edwards.
Okay, yes. Governors' group met on March 29th. We reviewed four policies, but it's really three because the one in the middle is both in the B section for board and in the G section for personnel. So I'll do the last three first. The BG, Board Staff Communications, there is a footnote in there that they added when some divisions went to collective bargaining. We just added it anyhow way back when, so you'll see that language in there, and that's the only.
Which one are you referring to?
BG and GBD, which are identical policies. So let me just open it up so I can tell you specifically. There's a little one at the end of the first sentence, and then if you go down, "School Boards Who Have Entered Into Collective Bargaining Agreements Should Revise This Sample Policy To Reflect The Provisions Of Their Collective Bargaining Agreements." We don't have a collective bargaining agreement, but we put that in the policy just if we ever did, so it's already there. So that's in both of those. And in the Policy CBE, the Severance Benefits, there is an update to, I believe, code or cross-reference was added to that. No, it's a one-sentence policy, no word changes. The one that we had the most discussion on is, let me get back to the agenda here, is the Advisory Committees to the Board, BCF. VSPA had some language changes, but this is one where we actually had a Z on it because we, we have committees that are not the typical, like Equity Task Force is a Lynchburg thing, at least that's, that's what, I haven't seen too many committees. There are some you have to have by code, and then there are others that we chose to have. The thing that VSPA crossed out is that the committee shall serve without compensation for a one-year term. That is optional, so you can, they took that out. But Dr. Day had several other things that he wanted to share with you.
Yeah, so I've thought a lot about this process by which we select advisory committees to the board. We have the Equity Task Force, help me remember, there's a Health Advisory Board, and I'm not remembering the other.
CTE and Special Education.
Okay. So there's a number of aspects of this policy that I think we really ought to consider changing. Looking at some of the committee memberships over the past several years, it appears to me that in some cases, we have the same individuals on those committees year after year after year. And I don't think that's healthy, I don't think that lends itself to making sure those committees really represent the community. It becomes a sort of in-house kind of thing. So I would like to recommend that we establish some sort of term limits. I have a specific idea about what to recommend, but I'm just, at this point, giving you the topics that I'd like us to consider. Secondly, all of these committees have something like 20 members on them, but I am told by members of some of these committees that it's quite common that not all of those come. Sometimes it's, it's on the order of half come. I think what happens is with a committee that size, an individual member, particularly if they hold a position that isn't the majority position, they figure, well, there's no point in me being here, I stopped coming. So I would like to suggest that we reduce the size of these committees so that every individual in this committee feels like they, their voice really matters. Also, the way we've appointed these committees in the past is that individuals wanting to be on the committee submit an application. And Dr. Edwards did share the, the application information from last fall, when these committees were, their membership was approved by us. It was announced to us in one of the weekly updates, which, to be frank, I overlooked because it didn't, there was no connection to it in the board agenda. So I would like to sort of codify the application process, and I would like, instead of Dr. Edwards just giving us a slate of recommendations and we vote up and down, yes or no on it, I would like the board to be more, more involved in the selection of the individuals on these committees. And what I would recommend is that each one of us be given the opportunity to appoint one of the applicants, and if any remaining seats on, that are not filled by the nine appointments that we would generate, would be handled similar to the way that we've been doing the appointments in the past, that there would be some kind of a slate of candidates for the remaining ones. I would like to mandate that each of these committees do elect a chair and a secretary, and we specify what their duties are, because that's, that doesn't seem to be in here now. Those committee meetings can pretty much just be a free-for-all because there's no order or structure to it. And that we mandate attendance records and minutes and an end-of-term written report from each of these committees to the board about what they did. For any recommendation of these committees, I think there should be a majority vote of the membership, not just, you know, if there's only, if there's only 10 members of a 20-minute member committee at a meeting, and six of them decide what they want to do, and we're getting a recommendation from six out of 20 board members, and I, so that doesn't represent the board, so, or represent the. And I, so that doesn't represent the board, so, or represent the committee's opinion as a whole. So I think there needs to be a requirement that the recommendations of the committees be backed up by an actual vote of the majority of the membership of the committee. So I have taken our existing policy and written up a version of it with my suggestions written in, which I haven't forwarded to anybody, but what I would like to do is send this particular policy back to the work group with my suggestions for changes and ask them to seriously consider these issues that I've identified that I think we ought to change.
I have a concern about everybody nominating somebody because, because for myself, I can only speak for me. There are some of these that I would feel comfortable nominating somebody for. I wouldn't feel comfortable, for example, suggesting the School Health Advisory Board necessarily, because that's not my area of expertise.
So maybe we could adjust that and say, you have the opportunity to nominate one if you want. If you don't want to, you don't have to.
Go ahead.
And I just want to apologize to some of these groups because these groups have chairs. And they, they do do reports. The Health Advisory gives us a report. The Special Ed, they have a system where they actually nominate and get representatives from each school. So they're not just, just out there willy-nilly. They do have structure.
Are all the committees that careful about?
Well, and I know the Equity Task Force, they have a chair and vice chair and all that.
I don't know who the chair is.
Well, that's because we, we need, and they, the people here tonight said they wanted to present to us. So the, but the Health Advisory, don't they give us a report every year of regarding this huge?
Youth risk behavior.
Yeah, youth, youth, law, youth risk behavior. And but, and also the special, the advisory, but for us to think that we're, that we are just now, after all of these school boards, that now we're the first to think that we need to structure these people, they, they're structured. We just need to maybe, but now I always have concern about how many numbers, but some of them, because of the way they're set up, they have to have that number of people.
Well, I think, for instance, the CTE group, I think someone's pointed out that it's important that they get information from all the people that are knowledgeable about those areas. There's nothing that prevents any of these committees from having invited guests or asking people to come speak to them. Just because somebody has expertise doesn't mean they need to be on the committee. It would be up to the committee to solicit their advice and expertise. We don't need to have every consideration represented by an expert on the committee.
Just a caution, some of the committees, I believe it's CTE and possibly Special Education, have specific requirements. Or like CTE for the different career clusters and things like that. That, I, I don't know if you looked at any of those legal codes that are listed.
So is this state law? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, in terms, and even Special Education, I do believe you have to be a parent of a Special Ed. I don't want to misspeak, but I, I know, having spoken with Janine, Ms. Daniels-Boscher, and Mr. Dooley in terms of their membership, and, and CTE is one that they've got little subcommittees and things like that for it. Equity Task Force this year, in their earlier meeting, did elect a chair, actually co-chairs. I do believe they introduced themselves the first time that they spoke to this particular group. And by structure, what typically has happened with, at least during my tenure here on a school board, is School Health Advisory and definitely Equity Task Force. I do remember presenting their recommendations, findings and suggestions. Usually this time, we used to have work sessions that were specifically dedicated to their work. Special, Special Education, they, their presentation is usually a little bit early. They do something for Special Education Month, and then they do some recommendations for the annual plan, I believe they have to do.
They've also come to the board to talk about what their recommendations for the focus for the following year has been. So as long as I can remember, and it's not just Ms., Dr. Daniels-Boscher who comes and does it, it is members of the committee.
Committee, yeah.
Chair and vice chair who come and give the report to the board and make recommendations for things to focus on in the coming year.
Yes. So could we add, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When I was listening to this, I didn't see any, any difference between requirements for individuals to be placed on the board, because I've been in boards and commissions, and there's always either an at-large position or one or two positions that require you're an officer or you have this experience or that experience. So I think that's included, it should be included with the decision or the nomination of anyone who's, if we change it from the one way to the other way. That's, that, that was, that was not in my mind, that that's not going to be part of the process. The persons who are nominated have to have some type of experience that's related to, at least a number of the members have to have experience that's related to the top, the main topic of the board's existence. And the second thing is, I agree with the, the numbers, the possible change of numbers because I was doing a study on effective leadership, board leadership. And somewhere between, it's either seven to nine or seven to 12 is a much more effective, efficient number of members to any committee than anything above that. And that's been studied, and that's a statistical fact, so.
So the existing policy does specify some qualifications. So for instance, regarding the School Health Advisory Board, the existing policy says, it talks, what it says is, School Health Advisory Board may have a maximum of 20 members, including, but not limited to, parents and guardians, students, health professor, professionals, education, educators, and others. So there is a specification. It doesn't make it mandatory for every member of the board, but it does say the members should include people with those, those backgrounds.
And the, Ms. Day, correct me, but again, in the, in July of 2023, when you all had your work session, one of the things that you did at that work session, all these advisory committees were listed, and there was a charge for what they were supposed to focus on this year. So if you go back to the July 2023 board meeting, work session meeting, you'll see that. And that's pretty much where they went. For example, Equity Task Force had the model policy. That's why they kept coming back, talking to you about the model policy. That was their charge to do it. The other thing is, you, you had asked that, before we just had names, like they would just come, or people would say me. The, the previous board had asked that there be that fill it out application and that the person have to state why they wanted to be on that committee or what they would contribute, and that that information would come to the board and the board would make the decision as to who, what, right? So we did provide that information to the board and hopes that perhaps some of that work session time would be used to vet that. I'm not quite sure how the vetting process.
Well, so I know for my part, I don't remember reviewing that information. And I just wonder how many of the rest of us actually reviewed that information before voting on the approval of the memberships of these committees. And I think I am at fault, and any of us who did not review that information in advance is, are also at fault. And I'm trying to remedy that. I'm trying to build into this a way that we really have to look at it before. Now, that's on us, but, but I think, I think somehow giving us that information in a, in a more direct way than rather in a, in the weekly.
Well, it's a separate document. That's 17 pages long, so you all have a, a link to the document and you.
Was it in the, was it in the board agenda or something?
No, well, we didn't, because people put personal, so we did not put that in the board agenda. You all, at that time, said you just wanted it sent to you. So we quickly compiled it, put it together, and then I forget which weekly update where there is a, here's a link and there's an explanation, and then it's straight, all 17 pages worth of every individual of, and some people put that they wanted to be on more than one committee on here.
So I'm just suggesting, I think there needs to be a better way to get that document, access to it, to the whole board in a way that's associated with the agenda for the meeting where we're going to take action on it. I understand that there's a confidentiality issue, but if it's posted on a, you know, Google Docs page, you can just give access to the specific individuals on the board, and no one else will have access to it. So I, I'm not trying to be critical of how we've done it in the past. I'm trying to suggest a way that I think would be better in the future.
All right. The continues, the discussion will continue.
So, so I'm asking that this policy go back, and let me make it a motion. I move that we ask the policy, appropriate work group to reconsider this policy.
Because we are not voting up and down on this policy.
I know, it's a discussion, right?
It's just a first read, so.
Yeah.
Okay, but I, I would like the policy reconsidered before we take a final vote on it.
Who's part of that group?
I am.
Okay, well, you all do it.
Can I call a meeting of the work group?
Yeah. Doesn't have to be a motion.
Well, typically, you might want, we just try to make sure that me and Carrie and the attorney can also be present, and it depends on if you wanted any community input, because it's a advisory community. Sometimes we ask other people, maybe Robbie, Mr. Dooley, the people who work with the committees. You may want to have them at that work group meeting, just to give you some information. There are things I might not know. I don't run them all.
So I'm not clear on how I should proceed.
I can schedule, it sounds like you want, like any other policy, it sounds like you want this policy to, the existing policy, to be reviewed. We schedule a work group meeting.
Okay.
I can invite the other, the liaisons for the, for the committee to join us, similar as we've done at all. Mrs. Cole will set up the meeting dates by Zoom and get everything together. We'll do it that way.
That's fine. That's fine.
All come too, if we want?
No, we all can come, because then it's a board meeting. So it's only two on the policy.
May I ask a question? So is, is your, is your concern the policy itself? Or is it the availability of the information that results from the policy? Because what it sounded like you were saying was, we don't know who belongs to which group and what the responsibilities are of each group. Am I?
I, I want the board to be more involved in the selection of the individuals on these work groups and to have a stronger influence on that. And I want the groups to be smaller in number. And I want more consistent information, back and forth. In fact, another thing I would suggest is that each of these work groups have a representative from the board that sits with them, not as a member, but to be there at their meetings to, to facilitate communications. Now, I know everybody here is already overburdened with being on, whether it's Beacon of Hope or Partners in Education or something. This would be four more assignments of that type. But I know that people on the Equity Task Force in particular have expressed concern that they don't think their communication with the board has been sufficient. And I think having one of us who sat with them all year, not as a, as a member, not trying to influence them, but trying to be a communication, I think that might have helped. And perhaps likewise with the other advisory committees, that having a board being, participating in their discussions, being there to hear their discussions and understand what the, what the, the collective opinions of those committees are would be helpful. So I'm trying to improve the process, so it's more, so it's more effective. Yes.
Mr. Frost.
Yeah, and I understand, I agree with you. I think the committees are, you know, they get too large and nothing kind of happens. And I, for one, I remember reviewing some names on a, one of the committees, I think it may have been the Equity Task Force Committee, reading a list of names there, and I did not know there were resumes or other things behind it. So I did inquire into people on it specifically, but that wasn't, that was, I think, two years ago. I don't know.
Well, your suggestion was one of the reasons why we did the whole survey and got the additional information.
Exactly. And then I agree also, I think we do lose, and the Equity Task Force member said that, we kind of do lose that little bit of communication. So not that I think we need more work to do, but I believe that having a board member involved some way does give a little bit of a conduit, because I would, I'd like to hear from the committees, either through a, you know, a board member. This is what's going on, and this is what they'd like to present. So I, I mean, I agree. I think it makes the committees more effective in terms of really helping us achieve specific goals. So that's good. I think, I agree.
Mr. Andrews.
To your point, I just joined Equity Task Force. Their frustration is that the board doesn't allow them to, to report out what their findings are. They have to report during public comment, not so much.
They did, at one previous meeting, they did have a part on the agenda where they.
Yeah, but I think they, just like anybody else, they just want a, an opportunity, right? Like to share with the board their findings, right? Just like a health committee, you know, so.
I think that's one of the concerns they raise in terms of what, like, because they have requested to be on the agenda, and when it comes from my staff, it's on the agenda, but then they don't end up on the agenda. So what is, if they, as an advisory committee, is it just a one time at the end of the year that they do a report out? In addition to, you should have in board docs, since there was some confusion about information, in board docs, when you guys log in, you should be able to see the meeting dates. You should be able to see the meeting minutes. You should be able to see the attendance, so that when you get to the end of the year, if you're concerned that somebody hasn't shown up, you, you could, you are monitoring that, and that's one of the things I know Ms. Day is working with the committee liaisons on my team to make sure all that information is in there for you.
All right. We're going to keep that nine o'clock, so we'll continue this discussion, right?
Well, what are the next steps?
Sounds like the, the, this is the Governance Task Force, is that right?
Governance Policy.
Work Policy Work Group will need to reconvene and have some further discussion about this.
And along those lines, not to hijack your, your discussion, next steps for my specific thing is, I'm going to make that change. Send it to, do you want it to go to only you, Ms. Pugh? Okay.
Send it to whoever, but I will follow up with the principals.
I'll send it to the entire board. Ms. Pugh's going to follow up with the principals, and maybe we can come back. I realize that it's probably not possible for this commencement to have the policy in place, but we'll bring it for a vote.
Good. Thank you. Operations Policy, Dr. Ward.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The Operations Policy Committee, our group, met April 8th. We have 10 policies that I'll go through briefly. Most of them are just largely small wording updates. JJAF, Student Athlete Sudden Cardiac Arrest. It's just simply a wording update from VSBA to change a pronoun to a more descriptive noun. The JJAC, Student Concussions, this is a three-year review, just simply wording updates. One thing that the committee did suggest with staff input was adding specific training on chronic traumatic encephalopathy.
Which is?
It is the brain damage as a result of concussions is the, is the best. So we hear about that, sort of the less positive CTE, right, that we hear about. And we also wanted to specifically point out the sideline concussion assessment tool and just change the wording. Instead of the specific versions of that, just say, we're going to use the newest version of the sideline concussion assessment tool. And just as a reason for that, the SCAT 2 and SCAT 3 that are listed, we're now on SCAT 5, and we just have it updated. So it'll just, or doesn't have to update that in the future. EBCD is School Closings. This just provides the opportunity to have a, a virtual instruction day, unscheduled, in case there's a need to close schools, as we will have to do from time to time. And that is just reflective of state code as well. Policy EC is Building Grounds and Maintenance. That's a, just a, I think it's a code update, code reference update. ECA is Inventory Reporting of Loss or Damage. Again, that's a, removing a cross-reference to JFCR. EDC is Authorized Use of School-Owned Facilities and Materials. This is actually a policy that VSBA suggested removing, but we would like to keep that, and so it will become, we'll add a Z to the policy. We just think it's important to have that in. we'll add a Z to the policy, we just think it's important to have that in policy and write that there may be certain or appropriate uses of school buildings beyond the sort of instructional day, we just want to have that spelled out, that, those regulations can be, can be established. Policy FE, Playground Equipment, this is simply just wording update, just clarifying that the principal is responsible at a school by code for, at least, review of the playground equipment. Public Complaints, this is a VSB update that removes across, updates across reference and adds IIA and KLB. KMA, Relations with Parent Organizations, just updating legal reference, and then Charter Schools at LC, LC is Charter Schools, which is a wording update and legal update as well.
None of the links went to the changes?
You have to log into Board Docs for the links to go, but, yeah, mine, mine works, so.
It does, okay, I must have got logged out.
I have two questions.
Ms. Laurie?
I have two questions, on the EBCD, I know this passed, was it maybe in the fall or wintertime or something, when we closed schools early, but the teachers had to stay, and some of them had kids out in the county and stuff, so are we going to make sure that if we're letting kids go, that we let the teachers go as well?
Not necessarily, there will be a case-by-case basis depending on what the conditions are, but that, that's spelled out when we have our school closings, so there may be times when we do that, but there may be times when we don't do that.
Because they felt that they weren't important?
Yeah.
But also, the other one was KMLA, do all the schools have a PTO, is that like something they just choose to do?
You know, not, not all schools have a PTO, certainly that's something we encourage and want to have, but not, not every school does have an active PTO.
Okay.
Good, I think we'll move to K2, then we'll come to the old business, Dr. Ward, because since you are on a roll, Adopt a Classroom, J-Crew, Art Donation.
Okay, we want to skip to that, sure thing, so, you, I think we communicated out to the board last week, just to let you all know, this is coming forward, we also had a public event at Heritage Elementary School, where J-Crew, in partnership with AdoptaClassroom.org, has donated $7,500 to each school for art supplies and art opportunities, and those particular projects here, in this, in this award, is related to the painting of murals at both of those schools, so at, at Heritage Elementary School, there'll be a mural painted in the cafeteria, and at the high school, for those of you who remember the old Heritage High School, you'll remember the really cool murals in the gymnasium that were there, so we're going to start recreating some of those over time, and so we're going to be working with students to be involved in that process, to paint those murals with these funds, in addition to $500 of donation for the tools and materials needed for classroom art supplies, so that's very exciting, great to work with the principals and our teachers on that project, as well as Mr. Journey, who has been a huge part of that, and so we're really thrilled with that, and I think we'll just need a motion to accept the donation from J-Crew.
Just as informational item, or is it?
No, I move that we accept the donation from J-Crew.
Second. Madam Clark, would you please call the role? Mr. Jalil?
Epstein.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Tross?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Dr. Carter?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, and we got the old business, was discussion of the operating budget for 2425, is there anything new to add, Dr. Andrews?
Right now, we're sitting where we were with our last budget request of 43.7, was, which is what the board voted, and I recognize that we have many new board members, so just to kind of go back in time, part of what we, what we have done as a school board is in between deliberations and going back and forth with city council, if the board chose to change their number, which you did once already, after, I think we were up higher at 47.5, that requires discussion and a vote, we are scheduled to go to city council on May, May 14th is their first reading of the budget, and the city is going to put in, I guess, a, a number for us in terms of what they are going to recommend, so, at this point, I just want to be clear, unless we decide to take additional action, that in terms of what we, my administrative team and whomever from finance or board are going to be defending, asking, would be still based on 47.5 and that initial budget that we approved, and I guess a couple weeks ago, I kind of sent you like a little short blurb, just to show you that that's, that's what that, that is, but this is our last board meeting, unless we schedule something where the board would have an opportunity to take any additional action, should they want to take any additional action.
Mrs. Laurie.
Did we work out the, the water bill issue that Hegelson brought up?
I'm not sure I understand.
He said, well, did, did we give them an explanation for why it's $100,000?
Yes, we, we, yes.
I thought I saw something, but...
You should have that, every time I answer a council question, I do send the exact, you guys will copy that at the same time.
So, when you send something, so when you say, when you sent it back, then, did he get the explanation he needed to?
I did not get a response, so I'm going to assume yes.
We may send...
Dr. Carter?
We may send the explanation, it may not be what they need, but we...
We're going over on, well, it's two things, on May 14th at 4:00 PM is a discussion regarding the board's contingency, the request to have the contingency funds, this year's contingency funds come back to LCS, so that, and that request was submitted a couple weeks ago, I think, the two of you went over for the, what do you, budget briefing, I think is what he calls it, but I've been asked to come on the 14th to kind of go over that, and maybe that's where that discussion went.
All right.
I hope board members come to the, those meetings, Mr. Jalil?
The Sandusky Elementary and TC Miller's issue is still on people's minds, very much so, it's very important, and the city council really needs to know that we really can't do anything different than what's being done at this time, I personally would like to see the TC Miller become a hybrid school, but if there's no funds there, and if they don't provide funds specifically, there's no room for us to do anything different than what's going on, so they have to take that in consideration, and I really think that they should, if they want to save TC Miller as a hybrid school, or make it such, then they're going to have to make the adjustments that will enable that to happen.
Other comments? I had one, you know, in this budget presented to us in the session, the savings were 3 million, although savings, 2 million were coming from the coronavirus money, and 1 billion was coming from health insurance reserve adjustment, and this is not new, over the years, I have said, using temporary money for fixed costs is recipe for disaster, we are at a $17.7 million deficit right now, my fear is the next year, whosoever is on this board, I may not be here, you may not be here, may not be here, they'll be starting with a $3 million deficit, because that coronavirus, 2 million will go away, right, there's no automatic backfill to that money, and 1 billion of health insurance reserve will depend on where we stand on our insurance policy on January 1st, right, we're assuming there'll be changes, so we are taking the reserve out, right now, knowing we are in hold by about $1.67 million, it's just, it doesn't make sense to me, it just creates a fear that we'll be starting the next budget year knowing, so I wanted to put it on record, and I for one, is not in favor of using temporary money declared as savings, because savings are for good, right, these are temporary savings, and what will we be doing in next fiscal year, unless the administration presents a plan, that what will be the plan to backfill that $3 million, because we still have not answered what the 1.5 million for salary increase will come from, you know, the governor, the general assembly budget goes, 3% will require about a million and a half contribution, and all these numbers just are in flux, but the biggest influx is this, and I've been thinking about that for the last few weeks, since we had that number, I've seen that, and I thought, I got to say something, because we have a fiduciary responsibility, we have a responsibility to make sure that we, we don't do things knowing now that where we are, we are, we use 9.7 million dollars of coronavirus money, right, and we're trying to backfill that money now, knowing that what we are doing is doing the same thing, and trying to use another $2 million of coronavirus money, and $1 million of insurance reserve, I can understand the concern that we may not be able to balance the budget, right, that's, that's a legit concern, but let's work through the real numbers, so that the new board, which takes over on July 1st, is not starting the fiscal year with the $3 million in hold.
Well, I mean, I think that's part of what school boards do, over the past couple years, we have advocated for the increase to keep pace with, let's just say, the raises that the general assembly has given, we, we could always make a choice to say, if we don't, not that I would recommend it, but if we, if, if there's no funds, additional revenue for, from city council to support raises, then we just don't give them, it's not a great place to be, it contradicts another goal that you have in terms of just recruitment tool, our very own EC Glass High School student did some research on that and showed that, you know, competitive salaries do matter, our resignation list and our neighbors are probably making out pretty well right now from, you know, just where we stand, so, that is an option to not do some of the things that we have done, as previous boards' decisions have been made, the budget that we presented to you, the one that we presented to city council, did include the 1% bonus, and based on the governor's budget, along with a whole bunch of cuts, which, pretty much, that's what we've been doing as an administrative team, is just going through those cuts, as a board, you, you can decide, cut more, I mean, it, it's not a place where we like to be, no one wants to be there, but you can decide free salaries, you could, that's what boards, that's the board's fiduciary responsibility, and we should be discussing that, now, I can make recommendations as to where, how, what, but even at some point, when the belt is as tight as it is, to, you know, to say, where are you, how are you going to get that money, I mean, I don't have that money right now, outside of asking.
Can I show on the board the numbers, so that, I'm not talking here, your initial ask to this board was $42.5 million, if I don't take that $3 million of coronavirus savings, and you add 3 million to that, that is $45.5 million of ask, because you're not able to realize the savings of $3 million. City was proposing, and my marker is very down, so forgive me, Ms. Day, do we have a bigger, better, 39.4?
I don't have one down here.
People can see, 39.4 was their flat funding.
Sorry.
Last city council meeting, what I heard Ms. Witt say, state, as per her calculations, could go anywhere from 4 million to 6 million, so let's look at the low-end number, that adds up to 43.4, and let's look at the high-end number, that adds up to 45.4. Correct me where my numbers are wrong, so here, if you don't real, take those coronavirus savings, based on what the superintendent has asked the school board, we were at, we should be at 45.5, with this high number, we are at 45.4, with the low number, we are at 42.4, so it means the gap here is about plus minus $2 million, not counting the contingency money which City was willing to give us, so my point is, when he said cuts, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where those cuts are coming from, because the numbers are right in front of us, right, unless there are other savings which are not realized and which we don't know about, so that's what the numbers, I was running with Dr. Day last night, and with my funny accent and this number's up in the air, I thought, I'll ask Ms. Day, I said, could I have a board so I can write like a professor, but those are the numbers, these are very simple, you know, 42.5 million was the ask, if the ask does not include that $3 million of short-term money, then the ask becomes 45.5, I just added that money back into that account.
Well, I, I even said in the quarterly meeting we had, I don't agree with using temporary money on a permanent operating budget, that's, because where are you going to get the rest of the money from, for the next year, it just doesn't make sound sense, and I think that's something that the city council has had a problem with, when they look at our budget and how we're asking for things, and it seems like, I've heard people saying that, well, we need to be more fiscally responsible, so, but for me personally, just speaking for me, I wouldn't use temporary money on a, on permanent operating budget, that's just, I mean, where are you going to get the rest of the money?
Dr. Carter?
And Dr. Gupta, I, you know, I heard you, when you were saying that, when we were using some of the CARES money, but if we think about it, those funds were sent, and if we hadn't used any of that, some of the programs that the students really needed, the remedial, the remedial, the remedial services, and some other programs, the afternoon services, some extra teachers, readers, we wouldn't have been able to support our students coming back from that, and I also said, that we need to make sure that we told individuals that we hired upfront, that you are in CARES funds, it's a three-year, and after that third year, you may be, you may, you're going to be told that we can no longer use you, as long as we were clear and transparent about that, but the other thing, my memory is gone, so, but that's, I have to say that, and, but a lot of, we're not the only, a lot of school districts are in the same, same situation because of that, and when the government or gave us those CARES funds, then the local agencies took their monies away, and said, you have all this money, use it, and so, we have to, we had to use it, what else are we going to do, turn it all back in, and then all these services and the programs and the devices and everything else that came with it, they would just been, we wouldn't have been able to use it, and the staffing support.
And you and I had discussions about that off-camera a long time ago, but, look at it this way, you give me a piece of candy every day for six months, and then you withdraw after six months, that's what you're saying, how will it feel, when you provide benefits and you start providing those benefits from a short-term cash, which is not sustainable, and what happens after that cash dries out, there's an expectation to keep providing those services, which the district cannot, and that's what's happening this year, Lynch, Virtual Academy is a classic example, was a coronavirus money, now the need has come to where parents were saying, keep it open, I need for this, I need for that, so, if I take your logic, and what do you tell those people, they said, I'm enjoying the benefits of it, look at all the benefits, can't you find $1.2 million to keep it open, you know, I can go, you...
I, I, I just need to, we, we can debate the CARES money, but even if we take the CARES money off the table, let's say that never happened, what's the plan to keep up with salaries, what's the plan to keep up with increases, right, what's the plan when we get 5%, 5%, and 2%, without any CARES, without any expansion of anything, let's say we kept all the services the same, didn't hire anybody else, how do we meet the salary requirements when, as you saw in my city council budget presentation, if you really back out, we have to find 67% of whatever that raise is for everybody else, 67%. If I only had 20 staff members, one bake sale, I could make this happen, about 83% of our budget is staff, that's a lot of money that we have to find, just if nothing else changes and we just want to give staff 3%, 3%, or whatever the, the raises are, I am so open to hear, how and where do we get those funds, because over the last couple years, part and parcel, that was the part that we were asking for, that should have never changed with CARES. That should have never changed with cares, right? Cares was supposed to provide the temporary service, do the, the virtual academy, uh, all that P P E, all the stuff that we had. But salaries continue to increase and our contribution continued to decrease from city.
I'll give you another example. When we got that uh, mental health grant, we gave out a thousand dollar bonus to a lot of people as part of the, or a part of the plan. At that time too, I said, what will happen when this money dries up? So you watch out two, three years, when that money dries up, when you take those bonuses away from those individuals, will they be still sticking up with the dis, in the district? You see what I'm saying? You provide those benefits on a sh, in a short term with a short-term cash, it's not sustainable in long term. So where will the money come at that time? And uh, but that's the um, I, I posed the question, you know.
So did I, I'm still waiting for an, I really would like some help on how we manage.
You are, you are the superintendent and I'm not the superintendent.
Well, I mean, it's not a favorite idea. I was part of the generation of teachers that went ten years without a pay raise. They put a freeze until they balanced out the budget. And then the city council could see, we're not able to get more teachers because we need more pay. So, I mean, that might be the route we have to go until things even out. And then when things even out and we, they see that they need to give us more monies for those raises, then we can start giving them back.
Mr. Jaleel.
This is very related. Dr. Waterka, have you uh, come across or considered uh, two options that I've seen elsewhere? And that is, instead of cutting certain positions, like I, I can name a couple, but um, you cut salaries, and I'll come back to that. And the second thing is demotions, but you don't say, just like it was mentioned that uh, uh, this, this issue of, of the position being gone is not based, or removing a person is not based on their.
Academic performance.
That's academic performance, but simply based on allowing us the room to save certain, like, I, I, for instance, I like the family engagement, community position, not sure um, what it's called, but I like that because it, it reminds me of other positions that help so much to make things better overall, um, relation-wise within the organization and, and communication with those who are outside of it. But very, very much related, like, like parents. Uh, so that's that, and then the, the, the cuts can be promoted as a saving of a position like that. If you go across the board and you make a, and I did have it somewhere where I, I put it in rank order, so it wouldn't have to be everyone, but you'd cut certain positions based on parameters that you developed that are pretty fair. And it's, it's a certain chunk amount from, for everyone across the board in either department or however you want to, to place those parameters. And, and, and you say it, you say it promoted, it's for the purpose of saving this particular one or five or ten positions. And that way, everyone's actually participating in, it's a little sacrifice to save this person, to save that person, to save that person. And that gives a different dynamic on losing ten, twenty thousand in your, in your, whatever it is salary for.
And I think what he is saying is, what happened? What happened was, for example, when Christie was the governor in New Jersey and the unions wouldn't cooperate with him, he just had to cut people out, so they came to us at the time and said, hey, we'd like everybody to keep their jobs, but we require everybody taking a pay cut. And we all agreed so that people could keep their jobs. And it wasn't a huge pay cut, but it was, uh, it was, it was able, it was something that we could do because we didn't want anybody out on the street. So that's how the tenure began.
Cuts or pay freezes?
No, we took a pay cut. I got, I made less money, mhm, yep, I sure did.
So, so that, that is not a strategy that we have, we have looked at yet? Um, certainly, we're open to, to that, uh, open to anything, particularly if we can't use certain, certain funds. Uh, we have looked at, you know, multiple things where we've said, are we gonna, we have whole program reductions, the Virtual Academy is, is, is an example. Um, we have tried to take advantage of uh, attrition where appropriate, um, and where we can. So that's a lot of the school-based reductions are saying, you know, we have an I that's leaving and so we just won't refill that position. And so we've done that, we've tried to do that pretty strategically around uh, the division and trying to find uh, positions where we may have cut it, needed to cut a position and moved another, you know, person that would be cut, riffed into a position that we did wanna keep for a variety of reasons. So we've, we've employed a, a number of different strategies uh, in order to get where we are. Um, but obviously, again, a, all of this relies on what the end, uh, revenue number ends up being from both the city and the state. One thing I, what, we'll just also say is, is to remember that some of those numbers at four to six million dollar number, we'll see what that looks like, but a, a significant portion of that number is that compensation supplement. So at least two million of that uh, is, is related to that compensation supplement. So if you don't give a pay increase, you can't count that money, right? And uh, furthermore, the other, other sort of large thing, the difference between the general assembly budget and the governor's budget was this at-risk money, which is down in a couple of different places in the budget. We don't have any idea what's gonna happen with that. Um, hopefully, the general assembly will come back quickly and, and give us some, some decisions and the V D O E will be able to quickly turn around and give us a calc tool that gives us actual numbers. But that, that's, it's a difficult position that we're in right now because I think we'll, we'll hear people, hopefully the decision will be made sort of mid-May, um, certainly at the city, at city level and then hopefully at the, uh, the state level as well. But, but turning that, that, those actual dollar amounts around to us so that we can put them in and understand what our deficit is, that, that becomes the challenging part and has been the significant challenging part in terms of administratively managing this budget process the last couple of years. Now think about in the past what's happened to school budgets, is that budgets have been adopted by the general assembly and signed in February, March. We're now May and hopefully we'll have numbers from the V D O E, hopefully in May, but probably in June. And we had the same issue last year as well. So uh, we're, we're trying to employ every possible, possibility we can uh, in terms of strategy. Uh, definitely had not talked about a, a salary reduction, hopefully. We don't have to do that, we'll see what those numbers look like, but certainly that, that could be on the table if we needed to be.
Dr. Carter and then Dr. Day and that's the end of discussion.
Just one clarification, about seven years ago, at the very end of the budget, before we approved the budget, Susan Morrison spoke up and talked about the need to start looking at salaries and that's what started. This, not the city council, because we are responsible for doing that. And she initiated that and we've been trying to keep that going to make sure we stay competitive.
Dr. Day.
I just wanted to make sure I understood something you just said. You said that this, this extra money that's being expected from the state somewhere between four and six million. If I understood you correctly, you said a certain portion of that is part of the salary supplement. So let's just say that that portion of it is two million. So if they, if it turns out that we're getting an extra four million, essentially two million of that is already spent because it's tagged to the salary increase. So we're not really getting, we wouldn't really be getting four million to add to our budget, we'd really only have two million. And some of that is gonna have to go into our portion of the salary increase too, so we're down to about nothing.
Have you made that clear to the city's finance man? Because that's not how it was presented to the city council, I watched the recording.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they know.
They know, exactly.
Did Dr. Edwards want to, you were, looked like you were wanting to say something.
Well, I just wanna remind us that even just last year, when we were really excited to get additional money from the state to find out that three point two mil.
Four points, four point three or four point six million dollars.
Was taken aside and just for all in tutor. So we couldn't even use that to pay our portion of
Yeah.
the compensation supplement, which pushed us back into, if we were going to give those raises, then we had to um, you know, go with the um, cares funding. Uh, it does make for interesting conversations because we do come up with um, things like um, living wage, uh, conversations about, we wanna start at living wage, whether we wanna move the dollar amount up to fifteen dollars an hour. We went with fifteen forty-seven, fifteen fifty. I mean, those are all things that as a school board, if we're in a, a situation where we don't have it, then maybe it makes budgeting pretty boring because you just don't have any of those. But again, as a collective body, those are the tough decisions that, you know, we, we make all together. I mean, again, we can go back and run numbers for you, but ultimately, the board is adopting a budget which we want to be able to um, defend, along with your priorities that you share with us in terms of the things that you would like us to move forward with. And I, this year you, we didn't get a chance to do it, but I think you wanted to bring them up to seventeen dollars an hour, which still isn't beating, I don't know, I think Sheets is at twenty dollars an hour right now. So, great way to move them up, but we, we just, we don't have the funds to do this.
I don't have a good handle on numbers this year, to be honest with you.
It's really hard.
I don't have it, because I heard four point, you know, all these projected savings we need to have. I don't have a good handle on those numbers. And uh, I'm just one dumb guy, but to me, uh, I don't have a good handle on where the savings are, how much the savings are. You know, they were presented to us in a closed session on the sheet of paper. So where do we stand in those numbers? I honestly don't have a good handle on those.
Yeah, so, so we'd identified about ten million dollars worth of, of cuts. Um, that's based on the school and the division base, base cuts. Uh, and then that's where we were balancing with those additional three million dollars worth of funds and some hope, and we'd hoped for some additional funds. Again, if had the general assembly and the governor done their job, uh, when they were supposed to do it, we would be having a different conversation right now, whatever that number may be, right? Uh, and that's, that's, that's the reality. Now, I'll, I'll just say, uh, Dr. Gupta, I'll go on the record too and say uh, that I think as finance or budget people, right? In, in every other single budget year in my life, uh, I fully agree with you in terms of not using one-time revenue uh, for balancing a budget, absolutely, one hundred percent uh, agree with that. I think that we just have to recognize the reality that we're in. Uh, and there may be a need to, to use that for one more sort of what we call soft landing. But I, I fully, fully agree with you in terms of the sustainability of the budget. Um, but I just, it's, we're at a very difficult position right now.
Dr. Day.
I just wanted to make another, one other comment, that the uncertainty that we have right now with our budget, because we don't know what city council's gonna decide, we don't know what the state's gonna decide. That uncertainty is propagating throughout a lot of the issues we're facing, all right? It means we, we want to keep Sandusky and T C Miller open till the fall of twenty twenty-five. But it's conceivable, and I said this bef, once before and it caused a lot of distress.
Don't say it, don't say it.
It's conceivable that it'll force us to something uncomfortable, how about that? It also, because we, uh, of that uncertainty, it, it means that designing our attendance zones is also uncertain at this point because we don't know for sure. And that propagates into a lot of very understandable frustration and consternation on the part of our teachers and staff. This budget uncertainty propagates through everything. So all the stress that we are feeling, that our staff and teachers are feeling, I think most of it can be traced back to the fact that we are so uncertain about our budget for next year. Now, I'm not suggesting that there's an answer to that, except, wouldn't it be nice if we just had a funding formula and we knew upfront, we've got this much money and we'll just deal with it and we can tell everybody for certain, way back months ago, here's what we've got to work with, here's what's gonna happen, instead of telling them like we are now, well, wait and see, wait and see, wait and see, and they're all pulling their hair out, waiting and seeing. So I just wish city council would just establish a funding formula and all this grief would be resolved.
And state will adapt the J L R recommendation for funding of public schools, which they were supposed to do this year, but I don't think they went ahead. Because that takes care of uh, special need kids, you know, the differential funding for I E P and non-I E P students. So anyway, we'll continue this discussion, we're almost at nine twenty. Uh, Dr. Edwards, superintendent, come in.
Oh goodness, um, yeah, happy teacher appreciation week and um, just looking forward to uh, the fun things at the end of the school year, graduations at various uh, places, field days, opportunities to spend with kids. Um, and let's just make it a very happy and memorable time for all of our children and our staff. And we'll get through this, but let not, let, let us not let this dampen our smile and our engagement with the very people who actually made us smile at the beginning of the meeting, so.
More comment, Mr. Jaleel.
Teachers are great. I do um, think that we should honor them and I hope to be a part of this special event, um, a number of events that honor them. And thank you for serving all this year and uh, seeing it to, to the end, coming up very soon. I, I do uh, hope that I get to some feedback on this I E P situation that the doctor Hensley brought up to us. Concerning reading, those of us who believe in the power of books worry all the time that reading as a pursuit is collapsing, eclipsed by depending on what, streaming, video, internet or other media, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Yet somehow, reading persists, persists. More books are sold today than there were sold before the pandemic. Though print book sales were down two point six percent in twenty twenty-three, they are still ten percent greater than in twenty nineteen. And some genres, genres, adult fiction, memoirs rose in sales last year. But right now, there's one sector of publishing that is in freefall, at least among one audience, books are dying among them. Alarmingly, it's the one, one exact audience whose departure from reading might actually presage a catastrophe, catastrophe for the publishing industry and for the entire concept of pleasure reading as a common pursuit. This is an article from Slate, just summarize it, it's basically middle school. Middle school pleasure reading is dropping where other places uh, in the grade ranges are not. And the companies like Barnes and Nobles and other book publishers, they have a policy that says, due to a new, new corporate policy focusing on books, a company can guarantee we be, will be best sellers, means that they're not gonna put more attention on this middle grades. So there's a lot of data concerning this and there's a lot of different things that I could go into, but just keep that in mind that we need to focus um, a little bit on pleasure reading for the kids because they're tested and they get, they do little excerpts and not full books and it just, as much as they used to. So it just, it's, it's not helpful or conducive to reading for the kids. Really quickly on model policies, my understanding is, we will be sued if we do and we'll be sued if we don't. So that is why I brought that up and I um, could talk more about that, but there's not much time. I am still for that hybrid model of T C M. Um, I would like to know things, I think someone brought up, know, a more understanding of what's going on in our schools. And I, I want, I would like to know certain things that do happen so that we're informed. I, I understand that there have been arrests of students recently, a student, but I would like to know this um, and, and just get a grab, grasp on it right away. I am not for the tardy policies as it exists from what I've seen. Giving students three, four, or five before you send a note home is too much. It's, it's, it's just, there's too much slack there, I think it should be less. And uh, lastly, I don't have any discussions with any board members or anyone else about not loving any student, no matter what their makeup is in any category of life. Everyone deserves respect and deserves our attention and our love, not only as board members, but just as fellow community members. So I don't have any discussions about that or, or think about uh, anything else. Um, I do know that you don't wanna have seriously heavy lawsuits come against us for either, for any decisions that we make. Uh, I do not like the politicization of what's going on right now. And I don't like what it seems to be happening is a type of idolatry to uh, regulations and, and government policies that have to be better than ours because they come down from the national level. That is not correct. I have in my lifetime never heard of or seen a more irresponsible, illogical, unscientific regulation or policy change or introduction of a, a, a rule or law than this new Title IX policy. I have never seen anything like it and it's, it's like, it's, it's a bullying from a, and governments do that from a national level. Uh, you can look in world history, around the world, that you, you, smart people, you, you call them elitists or not, can make really bad decisions. And this Title IX policy is wrong, it's unconstitutional. And this Title IX policy is wrong. It's unconstitutional. It can't stand. The only good thing I know about it is that it doesn't take effect until August first. And there's a lot of things that can happen between now and then. And I'm thankful that our attorney general is working on this issue. But as it stands and as it reads, and I haven't read the entire thing, it is not a good policy to force upon people. When I hear these discussions, I don't hear anything about detransitioners. And I don't hear anything about other students. All I hear about is this certain subject that covers a number of students that need a lot of attention and help for certain things, but you can't force things upon everyone. I, I really actually was touched by the audio that this person was going through these things. And I don't want that to happen to any student during, during their entire time through LCS. So we really have to focus on giving them a safe space. And I know that the nineties were a different time, but even then, I know that there there were people helping people who had issues. Finally.
It's too finally.
If you're gonna have, yes, this is the, finally, on the same time. You've got to have, biology is so important that we have a scientific basis for our actions. And there's a lot of word of tree going around, a lot of phrases. And the one I see here is biology is not bigotry. And that's something that also has to be taken into account. We have to be scientific and accurate with our actions. And that's what we're trying to do without being a bully ourselves. Thank you.
Mr. Andrews.
I yield my time.
Mr. Cross.
I yield my time.
Dr. Day.
Just, I want to say two things. I want to echo the appreciation to our teachers, particularly under the current circumstances. A lot of them are in a straight, state of distress right now because of the uncertainty. And but even in the midst of that, they remain dedicated to their students and what they're here to do. And to me, that's service beyond the call of duty. But we're fortunate to have educators who are willing to accept a lot of personal discomfort, sacrifice and uncertainty for the sake of their students. And so my hat's off to all the classroom teachers and their support people who are in the thick of it right now and they're champions. And we're lucky to have them. Secondly, last Tuesday, Ms. Lowry and I met with Danny McCain and a number of other community members over at the Jubilee Center. Just to summarize that, they, this was a meeting they asked for. And they are very concerned and frustrated with the lack of any significant improvement in the achievement gap. And that's primarily what we talked about. Various things that we can look for in the futures of ways, ways that we can try to move that forward. We have many times, Dr. Gupta and I, over the past year, said to each other, we need to keep academics in front of the board, but there's always these other pressing issues, whether it's a budget or something else, that keeps pushing that off our agenda. And so I am hoping that particularly next year's board will maybe be able to do a better job of keeping academics up front and trying to really make some progress. I feel like we're just kind of spinning our wheels on that right now.
Mr. Cross will keep them in check.
I agree a hundred percent. In fact, I meet, I call it the Danny McCain group. We meet at my office and.
It was, to be honest, I was a little bit anxious going because I thought at first it might be some kind of an ambush about people that wanted to scream at us. But it wasn't. It was a very respectful, but candid meeting. It was very good. It was very helpful to me. And I really hope that we can find ways to respond to their concern.
Dr. Carter.
And I would like to echo Dr. Day regarding the teachers, teacher, happy teachers appreciation week and also for the school nurse appreciation tomorrow. And you were talking about the stress of the teachers, the families and also children are stressed too. And I hope the, a lot of the Dumbarians that come in and celebrate their history of Dunbar are able to view this delegate walkers and the resolution of number two, two twenty-six regarding the hundred years of Dunbar Middle School. And one more thing. I think that's it.
Again, to, to all of our teachers and educators that are, that are still up watching us, thank you for all that. Thank you for all, for all that you do. I know it doesn't seem like you're, you're being thanked or appreciated, but trust me, you are. Those of us who have been in classrooms, whether as teachers or as students, we know what you do. We know what hard work it is. And please know that we appreciate you.
Mr. DePaul.
To all the teachers and staff, all the people who are being recognized this week, I want to say thank you. I appreciate you. I wish I could be there and shake each one of your hands to say it personally. But you're appreciated and wish we could do, wish I could do, be doing more for you.
Mrs. Lowry.
And I had reached out to all the principals to ask them to forward a email to their teachers and the staff, thanking them for all the hard work. But also, I know it's SOL time, so just know that we're rooting for all the kids to do well. And hopefully, all the extra tutoring and things that have gone into it, will, the kids will see, the teachers will see that difference. And we're just hoping that we have a lot to celebrate at the end of the year.
Dr. Carter, you have something?
I attended the Sandusky Stars and there was performances by the, the students there. And we will, I know I will see some of them on the American Idol. They were that good. They were great.
Next to you.
Informational item, discipline committee, data review committee meets May ninth, two thirty PM. Finance and facilities, May fifteenth at five, three thirty.
We've, we've rescheduled that to the following day.
So it'll be May twenty, uh, May sixteen?
May fifteenth.
May fifteen, that's what it is, May fifteen.
That's to clear our schedule so that if any of us want to go to the city council work session, we can.
And then May twenty-first is the second annual LCS board student recognition celebration. Dr. Edwards mentioned at five PM at EC Glass High School. And the work session following here is six thirty PM. So twenty-first, we come here at six thirty PM. Five PM will be at EC Glass. And ad hoc discipline policy review committee meeting, May twenty-third at three thirty. Academic success committee meeting, May twenty-eighth at three thirty. Next board meeting, the regular board meeting is on June fourth at five PM. We cannot adjourn. We got to go to a closed session.
Yes.
So let me read. Persuade to quote Virginia, Board of Virginia, two point two dash three, seven, one, one. A one, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Non-renewal of licensed professionals, superintendents evaluation and personnel matter involving performance of two specific division employees. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to go into the closed session?
Motion. Second.
Mr. DePaul, Dr. Day. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Jalil.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Charles.
Yes.
Dr. Day.
Yes.
Dr. Gupta.
Yes.
Dr. Carter.
Yes.
Mrs. Preston. Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Should we stay here?
Sure. Just make sure that we turn up.